Ladies and gentlemen, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven o'clock.
I'd like to see if you can...
Welcome on this cold rainy night. Someday spring will be here. Anyway, I'll call the meeting to order. I'm glad everybody's here tonight. I do, I have been advised that there's a need for council to go into a closed meeting this evening under section 2.23711A 19 of the Code of Virginia to discuss plans related to the security of a governmental building or structure and safety of persons using that building. So with that, I will ask for a motion to amend the agenda under that code.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor, oh, this is up to amend the agenda to add a closed session. Made by Cesar and segmented by Sheila.
Yes.
All right. Making sure all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Perfect. Thank you very much. We have, next week we will recognize Autism Acceptance Month, Distracted Driving Month, and Nepalese American Heritage Day. Is there any discussion or questions about any of those? Okay. Well, we've got some biggies on the agenda tonight, and I'm pleased once again to bring up ordinance to consider the Development Plan DP number 1701, an application for a Herndon Transit Oriented Core Development Plan to allow mixed use development located at 555 Grand Parkway. It's the, let's see, it is the land's property at 555. So this was continued from the council's March 26 public hearing to allow additional time for review. Comments received have been entered into the record, and I will recognize Bryce Perry, Deputy Director of Community Development for the staff report. Hi Bryce.
Hello. How are you doing?
Here we are again. I'm excellent.
We don't really have that much new information to give you, that the, the application remains the same. There hasn't been any new submissions or any changes to what you all saw at your last meeting. I did want to go through some clarifications regarding the, the use program and the different percentages. I know that was kind of, we talked about it, and I'm just, you know, not certain that's entirely clear. And also the parking a little bit, no parking came up at the meetings, it came, we had a couple comments coming from the public regarding parking. So, just go ahead and stop me as I go through this if you have questions, but as, as we talked about at the hearing, the, as opposed, the development plan has 40% office, 58% residential, and 2% retail. But there's that flexibility built in in the program, and for the minimums, if it's built to the minimum square footage that were shown in the development plan, the percentages pretty much stay the same. It's around 41% office, 57% residential, and 2% retail. If the, the other option we looked at was what happens if an office tenant comes in and wants a lot more square footage than what the development plan shows? The, the office isn't really maxed out by square footage per, what's being, was in the plan, but it is maxed out by the height of the building at 275 feet. That would roughly allow for 400 square foot, 400,000 square feet of gross floor area for the office, and that will put the development at around 49% office, 49% residential, and 2% retail. So there's, we talked about the fact that there's no, there's no maximum for the office again, though it's limited by, by the height. There is a maximum for residential, and that's in the proppers. That's 488,182 square feet gross floor area. The, the inverse of that is that we do have a minimum office of 200,000 square feet and a minimum residential of 275,000 square feet. So we want to just, these are all different safeguards for ensuring that we get that, that balance of uses, and we can get at, at least 200,000 square feet of office, which is a little bit more than double as they've had. The proppers, this, this wasn't really discussed at all, but I wanted to point out, the proppers do talk about a possible hotel going into the site. If, per the proppers, if that were to occur, the hotel's square footage would be taken out of the residential's square footage versus the hotel, and that's mainly because the, of the infrastructure, particularly water demands, sanitary sewer demands on the hotel are pretty high and closer to residential than, than office. The heights, we've talked about the maximums at 275. The, what we haven't really talked about is what you're, you actually see in the development plan. What's shown, what's shown on the plan itself for the office building is 14 floors above the podium, and that's around 210 feet high. And then for the residential tower, that's about 19 floors above the podium, and that's around 219 feet high. So the, the floor-to-floor heights differ between the residential and office, which is why you're looking at floor numbers. For, for parking, there, the zoning ordinance does require bicycle parking spaces, that came up a few times, to meet what's in the code if the project was built per the development plan. 356 bicycle spaces would be required to be provided for the residential uses, 65 for the office, and only 3.25 for the retail. We have realized that's, that's low for, for retail, and we might be looking at a, a code change to that. But that, that is the minimum for the code. The applicant can of course provide, provide more for the market if they so choose. And, and what this doesn't include is the public bicycle racks that would be provided, and those are regulated, or rather guided by the Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines for the H-TOP. And, and we haven't quite, we don't have the exact language yet as to what will be required, but it, it will essentially be something along the lines of setting a minimum number of bicycle racks per, per frontage on streetscape, a minimum number of bicycle racks per square footage of open space that's not along the street, and maybe even a minimum number of bicycle racks per each retailer or restaurant establishment, so. Those won't be in the code, but those will be in the guidelines, and we'll be able to apply them from that. As the, the applicant did mention at the hearing, the vehicle parking does meet what our current code says. Although it wasn't necessarily pointed out, but there is also on-street parking on that center street, and there is the expectation that when the adjacent properties are developed, the side streets will also have on-street parking on both sides. And of course, we do have the Transportation Event Management Plan, which is designed to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicle trips in and out of the site, and that in turn would, you would expect to reduce the parking demand. All that being said, the applicant has expressed that, their thoughts that what we require is a little bit lower compared to what the market might demand, so that there, when, when this does come back in for its site plan, we would expect possibly some, some higher numbers than what a, what the bare minimum would be regarding parking. Although again, as for staff, we want to make sure that we don't, we don't provide too much parking since it is a transportation oriented development, so there's a balancing strike there. The only other thing that I wanted to point out that I heard at the hearing was regarding our proximity to the airport and issues with the heights of the building. We had a meeting with the FAA back in 2012, and we, we talked about the heights, and we gave them the possible maxes of buildings, and there were no, no concerns by the FAA. Voice of them at that meeting. I think, I think that's it. What questions do you have?
Yeah, I guess what questions you have for Bryce. Thank you for all that information. I appreciate it. Any questions for Bryce? Sydney?
Did we receive any subsequent comments on this plan?
No, no.
I didn't see any either.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. Looking forward to next week. Thanks Bryce. So that brings us to budget season. John's already ready at the end of the table. So the next five items on the agenda relate to the town manager's proposed 2020 budget. Comments that we've received already have been entered into the record. I've got a bunch of process to lay out for you, so bear with me, but there's a lot to take in here. So I'll, I will outline the public hearing and voting process. There will be separate public hearings on the tax levy, which requires a two-thirds vote of council, which is five, and a roll call vote, and that would be for the property tax rate. The meals tax, which requires a majority of council, which is four, and a roll call vote. And the use charges for water and sewer, which requires a majority of council, which is four, and a roll call vote. So the, the real estate tax levy is the only one that takes a super majority of five. Then we will hold concurrent public hearings on the fiscal planning resolution. This requires a majority of those present in voting, which is four if all members of council are present in voting, and there's no roll call needed, although we could certainly opt to do that on any of these items. The appropriation ordinance requires a majority of council, which is four, and it does require a roll call vote. Following the public hearings on April 9, separate motions on each item are needed to continue the public hearing until April 23, because we know we would like to hold at least two public sessions on, on the 2020 budget. Okay, so I will call for disclosures by council, and I will say there's a note here from the clerk that says tonight, we'll call for them at the beginning of the items, and then at the public hearing, I will call for disclosures once we call the public hearing on the fiscal planning documents, so don't think I forgot it next week. And so we'll see if I remember it. I will call for disclosures by council, and I will begin, "For the record, throughout the year, I may be invited as a guest to attend events hosted by various organizations, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I file the appropriate disclosure paperwork with the town clerk and the town attorney." And I believe that we probably all have disclosures, and so we do, audience, sorry, we have to read them all for the record, so we'll just, why don't we just start with Sydney and just kind of go around? Does that work for you guys? Okay. All right, go for it.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I file the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. Just go right ahead.
All right, Madam Mayor, for the record, throughout the year, I may be invited as a guest to attend events hosted by various organizations, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. I am able to participate in the budget deliberation regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed a proper disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I file the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Okay, next up.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I, Cesar Del Hagel. I'm an unpaid volunteer for the various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I file the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed, filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. I think there's an echo in here, Madam Vice Mayor. Wonder what you're gonna say.
Next one, okay. Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, many of which may receive, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. Now that we are disclosed, I will turn it over to the town, town manager for the budget overview.
For the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer.
Had me going for a minute.
All right. I'm on hold. Well, tonight, we're going, I'm going to present to you the budget that I submitted to you all on Friday evening at close of business pursuant to the requirements under the charter. What we're going to talk about is the budget as a whole, first with the general fund, work with the other funds, and then towards the tail end, we'll get to, you know, the, the areas where we have some, still some open-ended questions on the donations, on the, on the unfunded priorities that, that we talked about a few weeks ago, and we'll, we'll talk about those as well. So if you indulge me, here we go. So back in January, you all have given me a series of budget priorities, pretty much grouped in three major areas with some sub-bullets under each one. Activities that will advance the 2035 vision, talk to sustainability planning, I've talked to downtown redevelopment planning, I've talked to art center, talked to focusing on technology to support the town administration and the provision of services. And also, the second bullet was talking about how to make sure in a competitive marketplace, we attract and retain the best possible employees that we can. You wanted to talk about employee skill development, primarily talking about succession planning and leadership development, and how do we maintain a competitive place in the marketplace where we are. The third was work, was mainly more on how we do budgeting and how we do fiscal planning. It talked about preparing an annual budget that addresses the rising costs that we are seeing in our various activity centers, and also taking a look at what kind of additional revenue may be needed to meet these demands as they move forward. We also talked about removing the linkage in the meals tax from particular items, kind of freeing that up. You also talked to revisiting the parks and rec cost recovery model, and what do we need to do, and what kind of plan do we need to give you to address that. Looking forward, we wanted to make sure we're ready for Metro, that we wanted to be supporting the downtown redevelopment projects, and you wanted to look at a comprehensive, a comprehensive assessment of the town's exposure along in, along with the revenue streams we needed to maintain town assets. What this was is, we had a mishmash of things in the CIP that were operational, things in the, in the general fund that were operational, and how these various revenue streams, or these various expenditure streams were kind of crossed, and we needed to get some sense around them moving forward. Once we finished that, and we ran into our individual 2-on-2s, we were delivered a pretty significant blow, that they, with a B-Pole estimate coming in, or B-Pole receipts coming in at about $1.5 million under the estimates. As you know, as we talked about in those meetings, B-Pole is never fully budgeted, we never did, we budgeted probably 400,000, and so the hit to the O and M was about 400,000. But we had a $1.1 million hit to capital, ongoing capital. So the projects Van Buren Street, we should, the shortfall in Van Buren Street, our ability to pay for that shortfall, is we're doing Spring Street. Now, on that same day, we were given, dealt a blow of a $2.4 million shortfall on Spring Street. How about our ability to pay for that? Certainly we have savings, we have, we have undesignated fund balance, we have other pockets of reserve money that we can, we can go and tap into. But B-Pole was being used to refill those coffers at the end of each year. If we tapped a little out, B-Pole was going in to fill those coffers back up. One of the areas of exposure we had, once this, this realignment of B-Pole occurred, was that we weren't going to be able to fill, if we pulled out of the undesignated fund balance, we pulled out of one of the reserve fund categories, the money wasn't going to go back in at the rate it had been here to form. So the, that was probably one of the major, more significant drivers that occurred after we gave these priorities and before we were able to deliver a budget. And then we started looking at things on addressing macro level budget issues, and I talked about before, the CIP opened up a conversation about why is we put road repaving in two places, we get beat-out reimbursements in one place, we're transferring funds back and forth between the fund categories, and it made for a convoluted mess. That stuff that we needed to fix, because it spoke directly to what your goal was, but also how we can appropriately budget for these ongoing things as we move forward. So right now, this is what we are projecting to be the revenue for next fiscal year, is you look at the top two categories, other local taxes and property taxes are the two highest areas, those are the two we're going to focus on the most, because they're, they're the ones that, again, give us the majority of the revenue and get the majority of the conversation focused around them. But what you see, we are projecting a general fund revenue increase of about 2.3% across the board. That's $825,000 more than last fiscal year. So let's first talk property tax. Property tax, the assessed value in the town on average went up 4.6%. You see the breakout up there between commercial and residential. You also see the breakdown of our residential versus commercial properties. We're still sitting at 56.4. That's an advantageous position to be in. My counterparts elsewhere in the state are envious every time I mention that statistic to them. They wish they had as a robust commercial sector as we do. As I've said before, the, this, this robust commercial sector is a prime driver to our, our restaurant population. A lot of people that come here as an employment center and come to work eat at our restaurants. This is, this is, those two things go hand in glove. But what you're seeing here is we continue to maintain a strong, robust commercial sector moving forward, and we, we project that, even as Bryce was talking about H-TOP redevelopment, we're looking at more commercial coming in there, and keep, trying to keep us around this balance is, is certainly an objective. The bell curve, which you see here, is the changes to residential tax based on assessment across the board. The percentage change across the bottom, you have a nice bell curve at between 0 and 5% increase. Up top, you see the number of homes that fall into that category. So on the far side outlier, you might have three homes at greater than 40% increase. On the lower end, you have two homes at 20% decrease. So you truly have a, a nice bell curve. We expect to see this anytime, it's just a matter of where the central point of the bell is, and it is sitting right about 4.8%, which is what our average, our average increase has been this past year. So with this, in my proposed budget that you received, we have a $0.26 per hundred dollars of assessed value, and I have, not only is it last year, I'm proposing that we keep it the same this year. The increased levy to be based on the 4.8% increase is about $490,000. That is what we're intending to bring in additionally, based on assessment increases, not rate increases. And just to let you know, one cent to real estate taxes by $465,000. This is why we had to actually advertise the real estate tax rate, because it is, in essence, the levy is pushing it up, but it would be a penny increase otherwise. In the other local taxes, what you see is transient occupancy, 6%, we, we project to keep at 6%. B-Pole, it's a multiple rate schedule, that's one of the tricky things about B-Pole bases, based on the business categories that you're in. An administrative operation would be taxed at a different rate than an operations or manufacturing operation. So there, there's just different rates associated with different business activities in the category of those activities, but all those rates, I'm proposing to keep the same. Cigarette tax, which has been declining in recent years, propose to keep that the same. Interesting thing, as we get into the next legislative session and the following one, they're talking about including vaping products into the cigarette tax. Hopefully the, the General Assembly adopts that, that would be nice. That would be, that would actually kind of, I think, stave off the decline in cigarette tax and actually turn it in the other direction. Vehicle registration fees are the same, $25. The Fairfax County picks up on our vehicles is going to remain the same. Bag stock fee remain the same. Cable franchise fees remain the same. Personal property tax, town has historically had zero personal property tax, and we maintain zero personal property tax. The one area that I did seek to increase, and it has been so advertised, is the meals tax. It is 2.5% currently, I'm proposing 3.5% for a number of reasons. Primarily, the number one reason is to train, to supplant the change in the capital expenditure, the capital budgeting that we were getting from B-Pole. We lost a million, 1.1 million in B-Pole, we needed to find a way to, to kind of stave that off. A 1% increase in the meals tax is about $900,000, so it's roughly what the loss was. I thought the meals tax was an appropriate place to go for a number of reasons. One is, we are one of the lowest four realis, or I'm sorry, excuse me, we're one of, one of, one of the four lowest meals tax jurisdictions that have it in the state. Our sits 2.5, is one of, it's grouped together, there's like four of them that we, they kind of group between 2 and 2.5, and we're in that group, and then it goes up from there. The average is probably 4.25 in that neighborhood, give or take. So I thought this was a good, an area to explore to make up that revenue shortfall in capital. Again, I want to delineate that, because it was mentioned at the podium last week that we had an operation short, we do not have an operation shortfall, we have a capital investment shortfall, and that's what we're, that's, that's what we're trying to make up for here. Another reason why I thought meals tax was important is because that money was originally coming from 100% outside of town residents before. And now, now, as I mentioned earlier, our robust restaurants are supported by those businesses, so I'm saying this, suggesting that part of this should be paid for by people that don't live in the town. If they come in here to eat and work, and they're driving down the roads, and we're talking about road projects, that that would be an appropriate place to go. The third reason, and one of the more compelling ones, is it's one of our most stable tax, taxes we have. Real estate and meals are stable. If you look at their expenditures over time, or the, I'm sorry, the income over time, it stays, it's steadily growing, and, and the curve is flat, steadily growing. It's, it's smooth. It's not fluctuating, it's not undulating, it is flat and smooth. And I also wanted to take this moment to, again, dispel the myth that we don't, we just take restaurants at their word for sending in their receipts, we don't take people at their word on that. We go back, Jenny's staff goes and looks at previous meals tax receipts, we look at, we look at what their B-Pole submissions are, and we compare them to look for variances in those numbers. If variances exist, immediately the restaurant gets triggered a letter. Help us understand why this variance exists, and we start working with the restaurants to determine it. As of right now, only 1.5 of our restaurants we, we've identified problems with, the rest seem to be within those variance options. Could there be some underpayment there? No, perhaps. As we've talked about before, it'd be nice to get field audits out there, look at B-Pole and look at these things on a more routine basis. But I also feel comfortable that there isn't widespread, widespread corruption in this either, because as I said before, that, that if you look at those taxes over time, it is, the line is smooth. I would expect more fluctuations in the receipts if we were getting some, something else influencing the returns, i.e. some corruption or somebody not paying their taxes, or if it's widespread, rather. So we looked at this one percentage point as a way to make up for that capital shortfall that we're seeing out of B-Pole.
Mr. Town Manager, can I ask one question just to clarify? The vehicle registration that Fairfax County collects for us, they collect that and then remit it back to us, correct?
Yes, yes, they collect for us and remit back to us, yes. It is a part of the arrangement we worked out through the General Assembly a couple years ago, to have them, as opposed to having the long lines sitting out here to come pay us for $25 at the front counter. When you fill out your personal property taxes, your vehicle registration fee in there, you fill it out, you sign it, you send it in, and they remit the money back to us.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks for clearing that up. So what you're seeing here is the overall budget and the expenditure pattern. And once we've talked about what we can project for, from income coming in, we can then talk about how we can spend it. And so this is what you're seeing, is the, the aggregate of the various funds. General fund, we're looking at 2.3% increase at a little over $37 million, all the way down to the total town budget of $53,651,000, which is a 10% dec, almost 11% decrease. Before we start jumping up and high-fiving ourselves over the 11% decrease of overall town budget, this is driven off of a couple factors. One is we're not buying water capacity this year. That was $6 million last year. There is also, what else is jumping out? Water, sewer. Capital projects. The capital projects, part of making up for the $1.1 million shortfall was scaling back some of our capital projects this year. So there was a little bit of capital projects that were moved out that, that aren't going to occur. So what you see is like a $3.6 million decrease in capital projects, was just a matter of timing and trying to, to right-size this to what we're able to afford from a capital perspective. That's what's driving the, the 11% decrease. It wasn't anything great that I've done, or, or anything we can, I'm on victory laps over. This is just, just a matter of course. So let's talk general fund. We're recommending a 2.3% increase in general fund to a little over $37 million. Personnel drives 65% of our budget. We are looking for you all to put into this budget the grant-funded neighborhood improvement coordinator that we did already bring in, but we all, we need to make sure it gets memorialized in this year's budget, so our headcount goes up by one. This is the Corey Law's position that goes out in the Department of Community Development, goes out and helps disadvantaged neighborhoods and homeowners find the resources to potentially do some work to improve their homes. Corey is, to be brutally honest, I've met with Corey a couple times. He's doing a remarkable job from the perspective of where it used to be considered, let's go out and see out and see if we can't get them to get a lender to work with them. He is now going out and seeking, how can we get funding from other sources to help them do this? I mean, he's taking a fresh new, fresh new approach to this. He is more than energized in this position. And again, this is a Fairfax County grant-funded position that we're increasing the, increasing the headcount by. So that will drive our general fund headcount to two thirty-seven. And from all funds, golf, cemetery, two hundred and sixty-six employees across, for all of our funds. As we've talked about it several times, we had for the first time in three years, a healthcare increase. We had a seven percent across the board. We have two healthcare plans. One went up more than the other, but they average out. Once you weigh the averages across the board, it comes out to seven percent. And as we talked about also, VRS, retirement remains unchanged. That is a two-year actuarial. It was adjusted last year. The same percentage follows through to this year. Next year, we'll be holding our breath again as they redo the actuariales. Salary adjustments. We are looking for an average pay per performance. This is, we rate you on your work and we give you anywhere from one point two five, a zero increase if you really have problems. But the average increase somewhere from one point two five, say, to maybe two point seven five with an average of two across the board for all employees. We are also looking for an average COLA of one point three. This is really important to a lot of our shop personnel, where it's hard to be an exceptional trash collector, even though we've tried to address that in our performance management program. It can only go so far. These guys hang on what is the COLA. And so we wanted not, we wanted, I was targeting one point two five until I saw the healthcare increase. And we decided rather than pass their contribution, their contribution to their healthcare, the increase off to them, I upped it by to one point three to pay for the difference so their take-home isn't diminished in this process. Is that, do you understand what I'm saying? So I upped the ante on COLA a little bit to help offset their contribution to their healthcare so they're paying the same as they are this year. So that's a one point three. Part-time pay adjustment for temporary part-time flex is one percent. That's, those are our folks that aren't here more than thirty-two hours a week. We're looking at one percent increase for them. And you see in italic sworn officer, sworn officer adjustment, one point seven percent. This was something also that was very at the fore of my mind and then got lost in the gears, and I'm going to explain what I mean by that. Fairfax County, for two years running, has given additional bump for the sworn officers to which we have not. We are falling behind Fairfax County. That's a dangerous place to be, even though our, even though our agency is the best agency anywhere in the mid-Atlantic, probably, I would say, in the country. But I'm only going to give you mid-Atlantic because Chief, I'm a chicken to, to, or I don't want too much. Even though we have the best agency out there, we can't afford to fall behind Fairfax. Again, investments in police officers to go to the academy are like ninety thousand dollars. It takes eleven months to take a new, new fresh recruit and get them onto the streets. This, this is something where we have to pay attention. We are right now attracting officers from other agencies. I would hate to start losing them to an agency that is taking a more aggressive approach. The reason why it's italicized is somewhere in, all the, we're computing numbers like crazy. We computed a personnel number, got it in the budget, went out, and then once I sent it, once it left, I had the epiphany to follow up with the HR director. I said, "Do you include that one point seven in there?" And she went, "It was in one of my calculations." And we started looking, and it was not. So we have to find a way to address this moving forward. So it's now been added to the unfunded priorities list, but we are also still trying to find a way to address it in the base budget if we can't address it there. So we are looking at that. That, to me, quite frankly, is a priority for us to take a look at. And that is on, completely a hundred percent on me not asking that question before we went to print.
Do we know about what that dollar amount looks like?
Sixty-five thousand dollars.
Oh.
And we'll talk about that later.
All right, gotcha.
That's going to come up, it's going to circle back around.
Okay.
And again, this applies to officers, top of scale officers would not be eligible for this. It's for below top of scale. There's various other, other triggers that they have to meet to be, for them to qualify for it, but it's done in a systemic way across the board for sworn officers. And again, it helps us try to close that gap up with the county quite a bit. Like I said, when I was sitting at the CAO meeting with a bunch of CAOs, and Brian Hill sitting next to me, he started talking about more, "Yeah, we're going to sworn pay, we're going to bump them another two percent." I was like, "Dude, you're killing me. Really?" And I'm sure Maggie will be calling me as soon as I get back. But anyway, the main drivers for the O and M side of the house, there's just a list, this is kind of a sampling of larger things, so I could point out a few things in this list. The contract services is ninety-eight thousand for finance. A lot of this is for, we want to bring a consultant in to do internal rate studies, starting with parks and rec. This goes to your, you wanting me to take a look at cost and rec recovery models. We have to understand what their costs are, how they, how they recover their costs. We need to get a better understanding of that across the board. We want to bring somebody to study that. We're also looking to expand it beyond parks and rec. Looking at some of our other user fee-based activities to make sure we have right-sized user fees. As we get ready to go into H-Talk redevelopment, are building permit fees right? These are questions we need to have answered, and I think we'd be best served to get them answered now. So we have included in there money for Jenny to do that. Some of the other things, we've pulled out repaving program. This was something that we were, although we are running way behind paving this year because the autumn was such a terrible weather, and I just want to go on record again, I think somebody asked me, Sydney asked me this before the meeting, meeting. The reason why some of the roads are the way they are is we could not pave in the fall for the first time in several years because of the weather. So we're kind of backlogged, and we're going to kick it off in the spring. The good news is we have a brand-new paving vendor, and we're going to really try them out in the spring, and that's what we intend to do. But taking the paving program out of the CIP, getting it over into the general fund, these are taking hits on causing general fund O and M costs because they're trying to take those formerly categorized as capital costs that are really operations and maintenance costs and getting them right, right-sized and allocated. Some of the vehicles and equipment we're looking at, we have a parks and recreation van that's been around for, I think I learned, I think I got my learner's permit on that van. Probably that's possible. Now, we went through and scrubbed, and we're taking a look at our vehicles from a comprehensive way. Quite frankly, we need, I think we need to do a full-blown audit of them because where we were before is part of complementary to this effort. Moving forward, I want to make sure our plan is sound and solid and we don't fall behind. But these are some of the things that we are looking at. The capital fund, these are the CIP projects that are sitting out there. When we were looking at CIP, I was looking at the one, depending on the meals tax at nine hundred thousand dollars, and I was trying to, trying to target the CIP to somewhere around that nine hundred thousand dollar number. And what you're seeing here is about eight hundred seventy-four thousand dollars in, in things, starting with the tennis bubble. The tennis bubble is five years past its useful life. It is a moneymaker. It is, it is a highly utilized resource in the fall, winter, and early spring months. It is probably a bad snowstorm away from being done, or a bad windstorm for that matter. It is towards the end of its useful life, and I would hate to be in a position where we have a major catastrophic failure to the bubble and then have to try to replace it downfield. So I thought this, five years past its useful life, it was time to pull the trigger on a new tennis bubble, which will come with, how they, I'm sure they've done the vestibules different, it's going to be a whole, the system as a whole will have to be, will have to be changed out. The other, next two projects, Spring Street, Hernan Parkway, Spring Street, and Foley Lake, those two things were driven out of grant funding. We had user-lose grants that are sitting out there that we had to throw money towards to start working on these projects so we did not lose grant funding for these projects. Foley Lake Trail complements, some of the things we're getting ready to do in the downtown as far as getting pedestrian traffic in. The Hernan Parkway, Spring Street, that, I think that's a critical, that's a critical project for us long-term. So we had to lock these, these numbers down so that we could get the grant funding in With that, I'll pause, and we can take general fund questions, or if you want me to hop forward and do all the questions again, I'll be delighted to do that.
Sure. Do you guys have questions? You want to tackle this now? Okay, perfect.
Because this is the big part of it.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, who has questions? Sydney?
First of all, what is a bank stock fee?
Jenny, I explained B-Pole, you explained bank stock.
It's basically on the bank's capital. They have, there's taxation on a certain level of capital. It's, I don't remember, recall off the top of my head the dollar amount of it, but it's not one of the.
I don't either, but I read the legislation, and it's very, very complicated.
It is.
So we gave kind of the overview of how the net is charged, but it, when I went out as part of taking on that revenue projection model, I went out and tried to find all the backup information, and I read that one, and it was beyond me. It's a rather lengthy piece of legislation. So it's a complicated calculation.
Right. Which is why they said.
Do we levy it, or does it get returned to us by the county?
I think it's levied by the state, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so we just get.
State and its bank assets in the town are allocated.
Also, this is from a previous conversation, but the guy who, his name's Charlie.
You expect me to remember a previous conversation?
I know. He is our parking guy?
Charles.
Charles. So I was told that he basically pays for himself, and I just wanted to get a feel for what that is.
He does pay for himself. He actually has made three times his salary this year in his first year.
Okay.
So he's paid for himself and more. We're projecting next year that he probably won't make three times because people are going to start behaving themselves a little better.
I haven't stayed at Old Town Hall longer than two hours again.
Like, for instance, one of the scofflaws at the end of the table is no longer parking at Old Town Hall. So, so, no, I.
That's fifty dollars I ever spent.
I think we down, we down-budgeted his a little bit, not a lot, but a little bit, I think, probably three times. Again, people are getting used to having him around, and they see him coming and fleeing.
Yes.
I sent my letter.
But one of the things that we're going to talk about later, we're giving him electric car next year as part of this.
Cool.
So he'll be able to sneak off on them along.
Yes.
Although we do fix market problem to grow.
So we're spending ninety-eight thousand dollars to have somebody with.
No, 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 that's one of several things. That includes our financial advisor, a few other things. That's the total line item. The consultant, what is?
We, we put in thirty.
I was going to say thirty-three-five.
And that's actually, that's low, I think, but we, we've got a, we'll put it out for our.
It just kicked up. The General Davenport number that we deal with, our work with Davenport has a number, and the line item went up significantly because of.
Yeah, and there's two studies in there, okay? There's a cost allocation, which deals with the overhead charges that the general fund charges out, and then there's a user fee analysis. So in addition to any financial consultations that Jenny needs regarding any kind of financial advisory material, there's also two additional studies that we have.
Okay, other questions? Sheila?
Have we spoken with Fairfax County about the tennis bubble? Because I think, didn't they originally help us with that when we first got the tennis bubble?
I'm not aware of that. We've been tracking and making the payments for that, as far as I know, the whole fifteen years that I guess the back end.
Because I know that they had talked about it at several other places, and nobody wanted it, but we put it up. I remember it was a big controversy. People almost didn't get voted for because if they were for or against the tennis bubble in town, it was kind of a big deal. But I was wondering, because a lot of people outside of Hernan, does McLean now have one?
Reston is the one that I know that's been trying to get one for a number of years.
Right, and McLean wanted one too, so I was wondering.
McLean does have one, I think.
Okay. Because I was hoping we could talk to our supervisor if McLean did not get one yet and see if they might want to help us, because I know at one point, a lot of McLean people were coming over because it's so awesome if you're a diehard tennis player, if you want to play all year.
Okay, that was my only thought. Other questions on the first front, but anybody? Caesar?
Just to verify here, so the average for the meals tax statewide is four point two five.
I think in that neighborhood, is that, I'm looking at Jenny.
Sounds right.
That's the baseline report we've received from our financial advisor.
And ours has been at two point five for how long?
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve. And how many capital projects have been moved out since twenty twelve?
I don't think.
I'm asking because I get the sense that we're constantly playing catch-up on some of these capital projects.
I don't think they were moved out. I think what you're seeing is, like, for instance, major vehicle replacement was in CIP, and so they would be done. They would be done routinely. But is that where we're seeing that belongs? We moved that in. So for this year, of the list of nine or whatever, we moved several into the general fund. We encapsulated some of the CIP. A couple, we determined were ready for primetime and pushed out. But I think across the board from twenty twelve, we play a little bit with it over time because the priority, mainly priorities have driven that conversation. And in my estimation, I can't really talk before three years ago, but in the three years I've been in it, is the priorities was the question.
So just, and if this is the wrong place to have this discussion, we're in the wrong area. From the P-Bac community, we identified some top-tier things.
Okay, of the forty-four projects you've identified, eighteen of them are included in CIP projects. So case in point, I want to say two, there's like, and I don't have the lists over there. It's like projects two, three, six, twelve, or whatever, that are on the Center Street, they're included in the Center Street, Elden Street realignment.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a group of four or five that are in that, in that particular project that are encapsulated. Then we have another grouping encapsulated in another project, but I can certainly send you the list. I just received it earlier today.
Yeah, and I have to coordinate with Bryce.
He slipped. He doesn't have anything to do with the budget.
Does it all the time. Because I think if we can kind of like converge on some of those projects.
I think if you get the list, you'll see what I'm talking about, where there are little groupings of projects that are in other CIP projects. And then eighteen of forty-four are accounted for in that.
And I just want to be clear, you know, regarding, put this in the context, our meals tax is nowhere near the average that we're even proposing. So I've seen and heard a bunch of comments back on the meals tax increase. And I just want to be clear that we're below the Commonwealth on average.
Yes.
And we haven't increased that since twenty twelve.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to confirm.
Both are true statements.
Okay.
Other questions at this point? Jen?
Super minor ones. One, I haven't talked about charts lately, so I'll just mention eleven. It is, I knew you were going to say something. It should be, you should remove it as a three-D chart ideally. It is misleading to have it as a three-D chart, but I'm happy that there was no pie charts, and this looks awesome as well, so we'll just.
You know, my only, my only role in that brochure was to look at Ann and say, "No pie charts." What you put in there, no pie charts.
This looks good. Okay, and then on nineteen, sorry, you said this, but just go over this again about the tour grants. Wait, sorry, page nineteen, just the tennis bubble sheet, and then, so the Hernan Parkway and the Foley Lake, so those dollars are coming from grant money?
No, 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 no. We had to put a match, we had to put a match in there.
You had to match.
We had to put local money in to complete the project.
Okay.
Fully fund the project so it could proceed.
With the grant process.
And there's grants in there, but in order so we don't lose the grants, we have to start working on these things.
Okay.
And we have to fund them to work on them.
Okay. That makes, sorry, now I got that.
No, all good.
And then, so, given that the meals tax is going to be a hot topic since we're potentially going to raise that tax, and I think that, I certainly appreciate that we've advertised And I think that, I certainly appreciate that we've advertised that and that is, I think, the, you know, the best option out of what we have to work with. So that's good to know that what's four point two five is the average meals, meals tax.
Roughly, we'll get you if you want that, and we did that number.
So here's my thing.
We have a new report on that just in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, and I, I do think that would be helpful, certainly to communicate that to the public. I think that's certainly relevant information. But in addition to that, it's sort of an isolated number, right? So in my recollection, and a lot of like anecdotal evidence I've got from when I go to BML and I talk to folks about who have meals tax. So if I'm not mistaken, there's something like three hundred and fifty-something municipalities within the state of Virginia, right? And most of those, I think, don't have a meals tax at all.
Correct.
It's a pretty small number that even have it, maybe fifty or something of those three hundred and fifty. So that, I, I think that level of context, if we're going to talk about averages and sort of justifies ours with that, that.
I think, I think.
We want a little more context to it.
Is that a report bear that out, the, the numbers?
So it's, it's actually the Weldon Cooper Center is the one who does the survey. And it shows by locality.
Good.
The, the different meals taxes, yeah.
Yeah.
We can, it's, it's actually a year in arrears and it did just come out because, you know, they wait for everybody to be done, but I have, we, it's just a few dollars every year we, we buy the PDF.
Good. Yeah, cause obviously they get the average. All I'm saying is I just, I want to see the average of what, right? What are we, sure, we average it ten or a hundred?
And to be clear, a hundred percent, and I think you touched on it, and I, I wasn't clear in the presentation, but I just want to be clear because of the mergers here and a few others, is we did advertise one point five percent.
Yes.
Now that, so that we can have latitude in the budget discussions, and if you all had other things that you wanted to make sure we could get in, I wanted to give you maneuver room to do that. The budget I presented, both in the form of a spreadsheet beginning of March and presented to you on Friday, only is calling for one, one percent. But I'm giving some latitude for the conversations as we move forward.
Yep, understood. Good.
Thank you.
Since Jim brought up the meals tax, can I, we got an email telling us that we should make this go to referendum and not just, not just raise it as a, as a body. But that, can we get some clarification on what's possible? Cause I, I don't think that, well, I'll let the town attorney explain that.
If I can let the attorney apply, that would be wonderful.
That applies to counties, not cities and towns.
That's what I thought. I may, I may ask that question again in the public session, because it's understandable that would be something that the general public might not realize, that it's different. Okay, Sheila.
Just a comment, when we're talking about the meals tax, the emails that we've gotten, and sometimes when you talk to people in the community, it's projected to me that the understanding is that we're doing this to the restaurants and people are not getting the understanding that it is the customers that are paying for this. And when the restaurants don't pay their meals tax, they're really keeping that money. So somehow, can you incorporate that in your?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just.
And that's a critical point.
Yeah.
Because if, let's say if you're in arrears to us on real estate tax, we handle that entirely differently than if you're in arrears to us on meals tax. Because meals tax is paid by the patron. You are, you are just a collection agency for us and you are to remit it, so you're holding our money. A meal, a restaurant is holding our money at that point and they remit over to us. Whereas a real estate is, you're not paying your taxes, that's between us and the taxpayer at that point. So absolutely, it is the patron that is paying the tax on the meal and the restaurant's collecting and remitting to us. And we do our auditing based on their B-poll receipts, and we can look at what the percentage of, what, two point five percent of their B-poll receipts? Assuming some that's not meals tax related, and we have some variance, you know.
Right.
buffers built in there and we can see if they are actually remitting what they need to remit.
And that's an excellent point, cause they're saying, oh, you're putting this on the backs of the restaurants, why are you doing that? So that is a great point.
One of, and that, that's why I wanted to make perfectly clear, I mean, our robust restaurant, our robust restaurant sector is driven a lot, yeah, based on lunch traffic. We have eighteen thousand people come to Hearn and each day to work. We are an employment center and they pay those taxes as well.
And they, as for Reston and parking fees, a lot of those people are still coming in.
Absolutely.
See, she's got another, and then I'm going to call Mr. DeCall cause he hasn't had a chance yet.
Okay, and another thing on just, I want to make this statement, you talked about the letter we got on the referendum. I mean, we can do that on every decision we make as a town council. And so once a year, we can wait and put things on a vote and, and do that. But I, I'm not sure why we would want to do that if everything we do, we're going to put on a referendum, you don't really need a town council. You can just put everything on a referendum, so. I don't think every decision that the town has the ability to do needs to go be put on a referendum.
I think the confusion there was that the county had a referendum and so there was, well, then why are we just imposing it? I think that's the confusion.
And again, it goes back to Dillon rule and how the legislation allows us to deal with it versus how counties could be.
Anything? Okay, Preet?
Well, actually, this is, just to support what Madam Vice Mayor is saying. I, I feel like there is a little bit of contradiction between intention and perception. Why we increase the meal tax, meals tax, and what people are perceiving is a little different. So if we can communicate well, just to let people know that, for example, like Madam Vice Mayor said, it's not the business owners, but actually the people who go there pay tax. And the good thing is, you know, I don't know the percentage, but majority of the tax actually comes from people coming from other jurisdictions, you know, who work here and they eat.
That's a good chunk of it.
Yeah, a good chunk of it, and also this is not for operational shortfall, but it is for capital project shortfall, right? So if we can communicate with people.
Yes.
Well enough, I think they will understand, I think they're, the, the only difference I see here is our intention and people's perception is different here, that's why.
And to that point, and to, and to the council member's point, if I can just add one other thing to that, is, and John and I were talking about this earlier today. Had it not been for that shift in B-poll, I was prepared to deliver a base budget and then still have the conversation about advertise higher and still have the conversation about what priorities you all want to see in there and, and do that. But we were prepared to deliver a base budget up until the day we got the notification that B-poll had made that shift. And that was, that was a seismic change in our outlook and our thinking. We, we had to look at capital and, and preserving what is sitting in our fund balances, because it wasn't going to be replenished at the rate it had been before. And we had to find a way to try to right-size capital to what we could afford. And to, in order to make it work, we, we took a look at what taxes we need to do. And to your point, we were taking something that was being a hundred percent paid by non-town residents and supplanting it was something that is partially paid by non-town residents. And so that's, we're trying to not burden the town residents as much and try to, try to distribute it. And at the end of the day, from my perspective, I received an email too that said, well, it's politically easy for you to propose that. I said, well, politics isn't my thing, and my people, that's, politics is the council's purview. But my rationale behind it, and I drove home the point that this is a stable tax, it is a predictable tax, it is under the state average. It, it just, this, this was the one that was screaming if anything needed to be adjusted. And ultimately, the people that come to town, there's eighteen thousand people that come to town to work, are driving on our roads. We are trying to do capital with this. It just made, it made more sense for that than to talk real estate taxes at that point.
And you, the email that you're referencing, I think only you and I were copied on that from Mr. Lane.
Mr. Lane.
Can, can we make a note to forward that email exchange to the entire council? Cause your explanation on that was really excellent, and I think we helped.
Well, he said, I didn't realize you were copying. He sent it to me, I didn't realize you were copying on this one.
Yeah, I was copying on it, so, okay.
Yeah, cause I, he, cause he and I were in a conversation about it and then he, somewhere in there, I think.
I didn't respond to it, cause it was written to you, but it was an excellent explanation. Uh, Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, this is just informational, because it's the third largest item on the general revenue and I'm sure many people don't know what intergovernmental expenditures. So could you explain what intergovernmental includes? Because it's also the second largest.
Things like state five ninety-nine funds, which pay, pay, the state pays us for public safety. And that's about six hundred thousand dollars a year that comes in from the state to offset public safety costs that Maggie occurs. You have things like grants that we get from other jurisdictions that get transferred to us to do. Intergovernmental would be the Corey Law's position, if you had, that, that's paid for by Fairfax County, that's an intergovernmental transfer. Thank you.
Federal, state, local, there's a detail.
This is why I keep them around. So, yeah, five ninety-nine funding at five eighty-seven. Virginia Fire Fund Program grant at eighty-two thousand, litter control grant at six thousand. The State ICAT grant, which is there in that crimes against children, that grant comes in at thirty thousand. We get a forestry grant. Those are the types of things that come from other jurisdictions to us to pay for certain operations that we, that we perform. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Signee, so patient.
So one of the things that struck me when I was first explained about the meals tax is that when restaurants or other organizations pay early, they get a certain amount remitted to them to pay for the cost of collecting. So it's not just that they collect and hold the money for it and we go, oh, thanks for the money.
Right.
We're also actually.
We, we want to incent them to remit.
Incentivizing them to remit.
On time, or early, and so there's a six percent that they get to keep, to cover their bookkeeping costs because they're collecting for us. And their, all their accounting costs associated with it, and then writing the check back out to us. There's a six percent fee that we grant back to the restaurants as part of this to do it. So in essence, to your, I think it's to the point, I think Sheila's point, raising it by a percentage point is they get six, six percent of more of that.
Is that a typical practice with jurisdictions or do we do?
It is a typical practice, yes.
That was, I just really wanted to make that point, because there's so many people out there who, like Councilmember DeCall said, are, are not understanding the whole system.
Yeah, and it's ba, it's truly based on the fact that they are collecting for us and remitting to us somebody else's tax. Unlike a real estate tax where they have to pay and you're under the gun to pay, they are holding our money and remitting our money.
Thank you. Uh, Caesar?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having deja vu. I thought we had this discussion where we were not going to support that. The behavior is if you pay your taxes on time, you get six percent off. If I send my taxes in early, I don't get a little bogey. And I'm not sure why we're compensating people for obligating what they're supposed to do. I don't get that rationale. Help me understand that. We had this discussion, I'm looking through my notes, where we thought we would not continue that practice.
No, we didn't make that decision, but we did discuss.
Okay.
Finding out more about what, why we do it and does it make sense, but we did not make that decision.
Okay, well, let me ask the question.
Sure.
Why are we still doing that?
Oh, again, I think it goes back to what I, what I was just saying, that there's a fast, there's a difference between you owe me real estate taxes, pay me. And you have to pay the, two, we have a third party, the restaurant, who, you have a, the taxpayer is the eater, the, the patron of the restaurant. They pay the, they pay us, but they pay it to the restaurant. The restaurant collects, we are saying restaurant collect this tax, restaurant account for this tax, restaurant do all the bookkeeping, restaurant write the check, restaurant make sure the check gets to me on time. Or you have this series of penalties, so we're trying to say, because we're putting this extra burden on you as the restaurant to collect our taxes, you will get a fee that is commensurate with what you're trying to do on our behalf.
So they're manually calculating on this, or is it a field in an application?
I think it would vary. I think there's some that would do, it depends on your rest, depending on the restaurant that.
Six percent, I mean, I just, I'll throw this out to the group. I think that's, that's insane, especially when we're talking about shortages.
I believe there's a form they fill.
Yes, right now, it's still a paper form. Um, Munis has the capability of taking this online. That's kind of the last part of optimization where we push out citizen and business self-service where they can go in and report online, so it will be more modernized. But it is, every month, it's a self-reporting paper form. And, you know, we have a right to go if we need to, to audit them, or usually we do paper audits, which is sending a letter if there's an issue. But I know Fairfax City offers a discount, Yidda offers a discount.
It's provided for in the state code.
It is.
Enabled, so it's not something that anybody came up on their own, the state code permits it, it doesn't require.
Does not require.
Yes, I really wouldn't like us to raise a tax and then take that away from the people right now.
It's a lot, I think that's harsh.
Then don't raise it as much and then take it away. Six percent, six percent.
But why?
They, they're having to go through a lot of trouble to collect taxes on our behalf.
Have you ever kept books in the business?
They're subcommitting, they're subcontracting for us.
It's, it's a line item in an application. It's a quarterly report from a press entity to determine that. It's not like they're paying someone to calculate. It's an application, they're probably using some sort of accounting system, a payment system, invoicing system.
So when, when the county collects our fees for us and then remits it to us, do they keep any type of percentage for their trouble for doing that for us? I can't remember if that.
I'm par, I'm sorry, I just whispered that question to Jenny while you're.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
They're not listening to me.
Does the county charge us?
I couldn't remember if they.
They could for the vehicle licenses and they don't.
Okay.
Should we decide to go and do real estate? They will.
A certain percentage?
A certain percentage, exactly, because there's extra staff time that's devoted to that. You know, the bills, reconciliation, paying us, so, yeah, it would be a similar type of situation. And the six percent, so with the six percent discount, we net two point three five percent versus two point five percent. And I want to say that's.
Gosh. I'm killing my memory sticks. Why did you say it was like thirty thousand dollars, was it, or something? It's small.
How many businesses pay early?
Most of them.
That's not early, they pay on time.
Pay on time. Most of them do. Most of them pay before they done one. I mean, it, it is rare that we don't get them on time.
Like over ninety percent.
So if they don't do, then what we do? We go and audit them?
Well, if they don't, they get, it's a three-striker out sort of thing. We would go in with a nice letter saying, hey, you've got to remit. It's a monthly remittance. Hey, you forgot to remit last month. And then you've got date certain to remit. Doesn't come in, then you get the stern letter from us saying, remit now or else. And if you date certain, and then the third one is we take action to collect.
So if we convert Councilmember Delagoa's concern into dollar amount, we approximately two point five million dollar, two point three or two point five million dollar.
Yeah, it's like two point five, so it's about a hundred thousand, a hundred.
Hundred fifty thousand, six percent?
Yep. Yep.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Having worked in the restaurant industry, it's a very tight industry and I would want to.
I'm looking for a council majority that's interested in waiving this six percent piece, and I'm not thinking I see it, but if I'm wrong, please let me know. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Does everybody have a chance at one's one on round two here?
No, I, I agree with Councilmember Prejretz. The reason is we are increasing meals taxes. And we are talking about indirectly, it does not, directly, it does not affect businesses and the town residents, but indirectly it does. The reason is if there is more taxes, for example, if we impose more taxes in Cigrid, people may not buy as often from here than go to other localities to buy in Cigrid because our tax is high. Same with the food taxes, meals taxes, people may go to other places, you know, to, to save some money. So if we are increasing the taxes, meals taxes now, then we should not, you know, let, you know, take that six percent away from them now at this time. But we can certainly reconsider maybe next budget, you know, when we are not increasing meals taxes again, then we can think about that.
Thank you for that, and I, I think that if we were to consider that, and I'm not sure where, I think I need to know more about it before I could weigh in either way, but I, I, maybe a more gradual decrease than just wiping it out, I mean, I, I don't know, but it doesn't look like we're going to address that in this budget, so. Other questions before we move on to the next part? And if you come up with something, just write it down and at the end, we can ask questions throughout the budget.
And again, any question, I'm available for questions. You go home tonight, you think of something, shoot me an email. I don't sleep, so I'll be glad to respond. Yeah, Maggie's smiling over there, because a lot of my correspondence at three AM is with Maggie.
Yeah, she doesn't sleep either. She's painting her house at like eleven o'clock at night. I know it's.
All right, so on to the enterprise funds, and we're going to start with water sewer fund. I want to be perfectly clear here, because there's some confusion in the community about enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are self-sustaining business operations. No tax dollar goes towards them. Case in point, if we have to build sewer systems for H-Toc, it's not tax dollars doing it. It's sewer availability fees, it's capital reserves, it's their ability to bond. Now, to full-fake the credit, the government underwrites their bonds. If they fail, then, then we go back to the taxpayer. But that is the, that is the firewall that we're talking about here. So this is a full, fully funded operation. So we're looking at their budget recommendation, a little under ten million dollars for the water sewer fund this year. This is a decrease, again, I want to remind you, we're not buying six million dollars in water capacity this year.
Thank goodness.
So that's, so anyway. So walk you through the sewer service rate. I am proposing, and again, these proposals I'm going to talk to go directly to the plan that Davenport has put together. Because we hadn't touched water sewer rates in so long, we were the lowest in the region. But we started to see some problems keeping this fund in the black from a cash flow perspective, not from a capital reserve perspective. They were doing well on that front, but from a cash flow perspective. When I came into the job, we brought, we brought Davenport in, they laid out, for you all, and you all adopted it, a great plan of how to incrementally raise things to kind of right the ship, prepare our capital. First thing we looked at was availability fees to make sure that we were getting the right cash in, pay for our capital that we're going to be doing in the upcoming years. And the second place we went was looking at rates to make sure our rate structure was consistent with how, with the fund costs us to run. And so we're slowly building up to that. Still, at the end of all these things you're going to see here tonight. Still, at the end of all these things you're going to see here tonight, we will still end up at the lowest in the region after this increment. I think that was the next increment, we might have jumped above somebody, but I think they've raised their rates too this year. So we're still at the bottom end, which is fine, it's unusual. Your operons are the people that run their own sewer treatment plants, but we don't run. Persil being one, a huge investment in sewer treatment out there, and they're always at the top of the list. Those are the ones that really have the costs. We don't do that, we pay to have other people treat our sewage. So with that sewer service rate, six dollars and nineteen cents per thousand gallons of consumption. This is based on water consumption. We don't meter sewer going out, we meter water going in. So based on the water going in, we make some assumptions that it's got to go somewhere. And so we base that on water going out. You're looking at a forty-one percent increase over the last fiscal year for sewer rate. Sewer lateral repair and replacement program, two dollars. This is to pay for, if a sewer lateral is damaged, it's on the homeowner to fix. I know like Dominion Energy has a, has a program where ten dollars a month you can pay. I used to do it in the Incorporated, part of Loudoun County, where I paid Dominion each month. And if there's a problem with my lateral, they come and fix it. This means the town will come and fix your lateral because you're paying into this. Early on, this, this is one thing, this was one success story where we started charging this fee and the number of lateral repairs were so low, it was just building up a reserve. So we ratcheted back the fee a little bit to make, well, make, make some sense to where the program is actually charging what we're, you know, what we anticipate spending. Sewer availability fee, as I said, it is based on meter size. I can't put up everything, there's like eight, eight or nine, ten categories of, of meter sizes that we have different availability fees. Starting with the five-eighth inch that goes into a brand-new house, it's five-eighth inch, you're going to pay ten thousand dollars. If you put in a five-inch into a big building, you're going to pay a six-figure sum, some six-figure number. So these are very large numbers that we're talking about here. Those are staying the same. If you recall, you adopted brand-new availability fees to meet the demands that we're going to be seeing with the sewer capa, the sewer capital we've got to put in to the H, primarily the H-Toc and maybe South Elton Street. So this is, these availability fees were designed then. They adopted them, I think, two, year and a half ago. And so they're in place right now, and we're proposing they stay the same. Water, water basic rate. We, I'm sorry, water, with water, we can do what's called a ser, a service charge. It's the cost of, of us managing the accounts and doing things like that. We're looking at raising that seven cents date ninety-seven, again, part of the, the plan that, that we had come in and analyzed and we presented to you a while back. That, that increase is part of that plan as well. Three dollars and sixteen cents per thousand gallons of water utilized, that's a ten cent increase over the last fiscal year. And finally, the peak rate charge is going up fifteen cents to five thirty-eight. And again, the water availability schedule is the same as you already adopted. Again, all these rates were planned in advance and projected. And one of the things that we did, we, when you, when you adopt them, we adopted some rate changes. We came back again last year, and now they're going to stay with the budget. Every year moving forward, all of our rates will be analyzed as part of the budget process. So we won't be just coming in ad hoc and making changes. It's part of a scheduled plan that, that the council was briefed on and adopted last, or about eighteen months ago. The total water sewer fund CIP is three point three million dollars. The water side, the water projects are below under one point five million. It includes some water construction on Center Street for six fifty. We have to need some new water vaults in the downtown to support the downtown project. And they need another dump truck or something, or another. So those are the major projects in the water side for next year. Sewer, also has about one point eight million dollars in it. This includes a sewer pump station that's going in, reminding.
We'll talk about that.
We'll talk about that tomorrow. Something tells me that we have, we have a little, we have a little, we have some options?
I like options, options are good.
We're also relining the Sugarland Run Main trunk for five hundred thousand dollars. This is a very important main trunk. This handles, this is, the county is involved in this as well.
Oh, yes.
Yes, because this carries part of Reston Town Center in addition to ours. We own the pipe, but we, they are helping us maintain this pipe. And this is our contribution to relining of the Sugarland Run Main. Just to understand, the Sugarland Run Main is it's the one that carries everything out of the south end of town, or I'm sorry, the east end of town, out to the Potomac River. Puts it in the Potomac Interceptor pipe and down to Blue Plains to be treated. So this is a pretty significant project. We're relining Locust Street. Part of these relinings that you're seeing here, this is a very important part of our program because we have to pay for everything we send downstream to be treated. If we are letting groundwater, rainwater, get into our pipes, we're treating water that we are consuming. And that causes our sewer treatment costs to go up. So we have an aggressive eye-and-eye program. It goes through with cameras, looking the spine, if there are leaks in the pipes. And then depending on the size of the leaks or where they are, we go through and we reline them. And so what you're seeing here is, is our way of trying to control the costs of sewer treatment. So we're not treating rainwater, which is, which is just a monumental waste. We have some master plan improvements for another six fifty. Anything on water and sewer before we pivot to golf course?
Pretty, follow my signal.
So, um, few questions. So even though we do not measure the amount of sewer, but when it goes to Fairfax County, they, they, they measure and they-
They're meters downstream, so we don't measure it going out of the house.
Okay.
But is, in the system, it gets measured going out.
So that's the reason why we don't want the rainwater to measure it.
Absolutely not.
Talking about the peak rate, which, which months are normally-
So we changed the ordinance for peak.
Because it used to be really complicated.
It was, and we eliminated the second tier of peak. But basically, the summer months are when you're going to pay peak. And so there, and there's also a pool credit as well, a pool fill credit. So if you fill, if you have a pool and you fill it before Memorial Day, you won't pay peak on that. So the idea is peak is a conservation tactic, thank you. My vocabulary today is just a bunch. Amongst many things, but we did simplify it. So it was essentially during the months that you'd be using it the most, watering your lawn, washing your car. Except for the pool fill. That's why you pay a little more, but it's capped. So sewer for, and the way we changed it, you're not going to pay peak on sewer beyond a certain amount. And I believe we capped it at eight thousand, three or eight.
We're assuming it's going into the ground. Your washing your cars going in the ground. You're filling a pool, it's not going to go in the sewer system when you're gone.
Thank you, that was my next question.
It's not free-for-all.
Yeah, so we don't always apply sewer charges to water utilization. If he kicks in at a certain point and says, you know what, you're watering your lawn. We're assuming that that's going into the ground, we're not treating that, so we're not going to calculate that against you.
And also, like, individual, coming to the same question. People have, you know, they have their individual need, they are washing their cars or doing something. They can, can they call us and, you know, ask for exception, not be charged on the sewer? No, they cannot. Okay, so we already apply those peak things.
Right, it's usually, it's done through the peak charge.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just quick, what is the Wilshire Drive design?
Tammy. Come on.
It feels like, I don't know.
All right, that's one I don't have off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
No, that'll be the design to replace the water line in Wilshire Drive, and then we'll follow it the next year with the construction.
Can you remind me where Wilshire Drive is?
No.
Google Maps.
I think it's down, down, take a left.
Yeah, it's near the, back behind the elementary school. You're right.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else to talk? Any other questions on the, everybody's favorite subject, water and sewer?
Just a comment, because we have had this comment when we're talking about the H-Toc. And maybe when you talk about how we're paying for this fund, as it does relate to H-Toc, some of them grant them, and that how we're paying this along. Because there are some citizens that think we're, and I've tried to explain, but I need David Bullock to come help me. There, you know, some, some of the residents are concerned that we're going to get this massive bill when they develop H-Toc.
I'll, that's one of the reasons why I prefaced the water sewer conversation way that this time. I'm going to do it again next week. And I'm going to talk to, this is, the, the fund is a sustainable fund. It is not intermixed with taxpayer money at all. And, and how we go pay by, pay these things. Case in point, people that come and talk about perceiving taxes go up because we have to do all these improvements, don't understand how availability fees work. Now, catched availability is the risk. And you have to pace, because if we go down there right now and blow at H-Toc and build it out, and then the market takes a pause and Penzance isn't chipping in their five-inch meters, and Lerner isn't chipping in theirs, and all of a sudden now, we're going to have an issue. So that's why we're doing it in a very measured way over periods of time. And a lot of it's triggered when we proceed to development come online. Penzance, for instance, is coming through, we already know, the first building in Penzance, we mostly accommodate, as is right now, we might have to do one or two minor things, but they're, it's, it's small. When they go to buildings two and three, we know we, it triggers certain series of events. The good news is, we know about this. It's in site plan, it's going through building review, building permit review. We know, before they can start putting shovels in the ground, plus it's going to go on a construction arc for a period of time. It's during that timeframe that we need to start then doing the next phase to accommodate that. And that's what we're trying to phase out appropriately. We don't want to get too far ahead because it's risky. But we don't want to be, you don't want to be behind because then you can't, you can't occupy. And they, they can't finish the build. So it's a matter of timing it to the right timeframe, but it is all, it's driven out of our, our, like I said, the three, the three factors that are going to build this, availability fees, the, the cash we have on hand, and our ability to bond in, in the service, which availability fees can pay for bonds as well, so.
Your explanation here tonight was so good that I'm glad you'll throw that out there.
I, I just want to, bear, bear in mind, I, you're going to hear all this again next week, so you can tune out if you'd like. I mean, I'm practicing my next week this week. This is my practice round, so.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, any other questions or comments on the water and sewer?
All right, golf course fund, we're recommending a three point eight percent increase in golf course. It's really driven off of two factors. One is the golf cart replacement of fifty-six thousand seven hundred. They have some really aged golf carts out there, I think they're Fred Flintstone-like. So we need to get rid of those and, and Gene's, and we, there's some of these have been deferred for a year or two. And I, this was the year we had, I think we have to get it done, so we got it into, into his budget. And the other factor that's driving this personnel, they are going to see the same, they, all the enterprise funds see the same COLAs and pay for performance that we have in the general fund. So those are the two drivers behind this. He truly had no other capital requests. We've done pretty well for Mike Mueller and his folks out at the, out at the, out at the maintenance facility over the past couple of years. We replaced some mowers, we replaced some, some other lawn equipment, some with some environmentally sensitive hybrid models and things like that. So this year, the only thing Gene had on his list were golf carts. And we wanted to make sure we could, we could fit that in, and no, it wasn't without a problem. That was, that went in pretty easy. So we're looking at three point eight percent increase in the golf course fund. Anything else on golf course before we pivot to cemetery?
Sheila? Yes, the spring is right here, and I know the golfers are going to start talking about how the building looks. How are things going over there, with the outside of the building?
I think, I think the interior improvements have been well received. I mean, the, the interior side, exterior.
Exterior.
We, we, I know Tammy's folks have been out there doing some work. Mike Mueller, actually, we were hosting a county association Northern Virginia meeting down there. And Mike Mueller brought his crew over, started painting everything. I'm like, it's just a bunch of town managers, what are you thinking? Well, there might be some mayors too, but that's beside the point. Is what, and they, they went out and started painting everything. So they've, they've done some work down there. As we see things, we'll repair them, I mean, quite frankly.
Thank you, and who did I say sign me? So is the salary for, you said there was a, the COLA increase was coming out of enterprise, so all the salaries-
All salaries come out of their enterprise fund. However, the same rules apply. So if we give two percent here or one percent there, they also give two percent or one percent out of their enterprise.
Understood, thank you.
So that all of our workforce is on the same schedules, yes.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, sir.
Cemetery fund is actually a slight, slight reduction of a half a percentage point. Again, Dave Roscoe's crew, they do a great job up there. The two big things they want to do this year is they've, they want to do a master plan update, which I think is, is wise, because they have some, they have some, some areas of the cemetery that they want to begin to open up and, and potentially remove some trees, regrade, and have, open up additional sites for, for sale. So they, they want to go through the master plan process just to make sure their master plan is sound. And then the other thing is they needed a tractor, which they asked for the tractor when we were in the conversation with Dave Ross, but it became very apparent that the tractor would really be much more functional for him if we gave him all the right attachments. So we upped his budget to give him his attachments. And what you're seeing is, again, an enterprise fund, it is self-sustained by, by, I don't want to say user fees, since the users really don't pay fees. But it is self-sustained by the money they bring in, and you're seeing about the same as last year. Downtown parking, this is just the fund, Station Street Park Garage, a one million dollar contribution. That's, that's, that's standard going into, going for the downtown redevelopment oriented activities and capital activities. We have some debt service, and we need to do some ma, paving and maintenance on one of the lots. So that's the fifteen thousand dollars. Now, this does not include the transitional parking plan for the Comstock redevelopment. That is totally separate this thing. That is a five hundred thousand dollar number that's built into the downtown budget to spend on transitional parking to meet our downtown parking requirements. As you know, this fund is established to allow for businesses not to have parking outside of their businesses. They came into a fund so they could be in a pool parking lot. It's something that we've done since the outset to get around zoning requirements for parking for certain businesses. And it's self-sustaining. So just to circle back around to your priorities, what you've talked about. I'm going to give you some examples of where we try to meet your priorities. Fund activities advance twenty-five thirty-five, twenty thirty-five vision. The electric non-emergency vehicle for the police. This was something where we looked at getting Chuck a vehicle, because Chuck doesn't need to go flying around town chasing bad guys. He's, he needs to sneak up on people who could park longer than two hours. She's not listening, you know.
I'm listening, I'm ignoring you.
No, so anyway, we thought this was a perfect place. So the vehicle that was proposed, Maggie came inside, you know, buy one for twenty thousand dollars. We have this electric vehicle for twenty-eight, and we decided to go with the electric vehicle for a number of reasons. It fits with this, with our sustainability initiatives, and it was an appropriate place to, to put that. And I thought it, from an operational case study, business case, it made sense for them to do this. So we went that way. It continues to fund LED, sort, LED and other electric activities in the buildings. I know they came in and just retrofitted all my switches to turn off on me when I'm sitting there quietly by myself, so that I, I go dark all of a sudden. And we're doing that more and more as a way to save electricity in our buildings. We're continuing, continuing that. We're funding the parking garage and funding for downtown closing. I mean, we're, we have money built into this budget to advance those activities. Downtown closing goes directly to the art center. Part of this is two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget to give our space, a transitional space. I know Joe's been working very closely with Comstock. We have identified some, we identified one location, we all came to terms that that would be a good location. It fell through, not because of any of the three of us, but because of the landowner. And we have now deepened to another space, and hopefully that, that one manifests itself. So we're hoping that we can get that kind of solidified in the coming weeks or so. And so that, that is already built, baked into our cake in another, another place. Some of the other things, enterprise software system for community development, Public Works. I'll be brutally honest with you, since I've been here from a technology perspective, the Department of Community Development has suffered in silence without an enterprise software system. It's the only major department without one. We have patchworked them together for, over the years while we focused on other areas. I think the time is right in terms of they have the right personnel. We're taking a look at their business processes in ways we've never looked at before. It's time to overlay it with technology, and so this budget incorporates that into it. It will also allow for certain plan review activities between the Department of Public Works and CD to occur, allow for eventually the electronic plan submission. It will allow for a replacement of a current building permit. It will allow for a replacement of our current building permit system. This is what we're targeting just with this upgrade, let's you.
That's exciting.
You wanted me to make sure that, you all wanted to demonstrate a commitment to the employees, and this budget does that through a number of things. The 2% paper performance that we talked about, the 1.3% COLA, it has been up a little bit to offset the healthcare increases, so it's not put on their backs. It also includes, doesn't include that we're going to get it in by the time you adopt a 1.7% increase in the sworn officer salary, so they get up to 5% total across the board. We also are funding the Northern Virginia Local Government Fellows MPA Program at George Mason University. We had nine people interested in going and getting their MPA in a local government, with a concentration in local government. We're putting two through. We think that's what all Mason allows us to do, so we're going to do two. And we're funding for two. That is a serious commitment to employees that are showing managerial potential and potential to move on to higher levels of the organization.
We've got nine employees that expressed interest.
Nine employees expressed interest, but we think based on history with the program, and again, I'm a product of the program. I swear by the program, I thought it was a great program. And what made it really exceptional is you spend time dealing with Virginia politics. You hone in on the local government issues in Virginia. So we think we can get two through.
I think that's a testament to the succession planning and the empowerment that our employees are feeling, and that makes me feel really good. So thank you to all of you making that happen.
Siggy, do we have any method for making sure that once somebody's got the MPA that they stay with us? Do we have a sort of, you will stay for an extra two years or anything like that?
The policy covers that. It's a two-year obligation after the MPA term.
Just wanted to check.
So whoever really want to lock up to a long-term contract, they go to the top of the list.
So is there an option, I mean, if they left prior to that, do they have to pay us back? I did a similar program with Fairfax County, and that was the case.
That's the best. And before I move on, Ann Curtis is also a product of the same program. I just saw Ann pack over there, and I don't want, I give credit where it's due.
Have we fully vetted this program?
I know. It's scary.
I remember. No, that's great.
So no, and so is Brad Ansem, so again, I'm not really supporting my case.
Brad's been around a while since he's been on this show.
Yes, I tease Brad.
Siggy, did you have another question?
We are increasing funding for educational reimbursement. We're seeing a lot of people wanting to be getting their bachelor's degrees, especially out of the police. Maggie has done a great job with career succession planning in her own department. It is mandated, you want to be promoted, you've got to be actively pursuing your degree, you want to be promoted, you've got to meet certain thresholds to move. And so we're seeing, I'm seeing more educational reimbursements come across my desk, probably in the last six or eight months than I did in the first six or eight months here. It's truly, it's remarkable, and I want to support that desire. What I love best about our employees is they are motivated to do this on their own. MPA is a major undertaking, and they're doing it on their own. Educational reimbursement to get their bachelor's degree is on their own. It's not us saying, go to this training, it's them saying, no, I want to know more. And so I want to make sure we're able to feed that passion in them and help them prepare themselves to get greater responsibility. We also maintain funding levels for all of our other training and leadership, especially leadership training. It's very important. Actually, I think we even bumped your, did we bump your training budget up a little bit?
Yes, it's joined with the education reimbursement, but yes.
So again, it's all part of us trying to make sure we're committing back to the employees that truly want to give to this organization. We have some great folks, and I see a lot of bright futures amongst a lot of our folks, and I want to make sure that we're able to support them as they move forward. Continue working towards updating budgetary policy. Looking at that bullet, what you're seeing here is a recommendation increase in meals tax rate of 1%. This goes back to looking at, what are the risks in our environment and making sure we have tax rates that meets the risk? The 1% directly is related to that B-Pole risk. We lost money for capital funding, we want to make sure that we shore that up moving forward. And that's what you're seeing here. We did decouple the meals tax linkage, so there's no linkage to certain activities. And again, the linkage never really made sense to me anyway, because money is fungible. So yes, I'm dedicating this to this activity. Okay, if I still am planning to do that activity, does it really matter if it's coming from this source or that source, or it just didn't really make a lot of sense? So the decoupling is note that that language no longer sitting in our budgetary policies in that portion of the budget. We brought in a consultant, we're bringing in a consultant to look at user fees and cost allocation modeling. That goes back to what we were talking about Jenny's side, to look at first parks and rent. Are we, what is our, what should be our recovery rate out of parks and rent? Well, let's see what our costs are, let's see what our revenues look like. Why are they, why are they at the levels they are? And then let's talk about how to recover costs. We took a major stab at taking lifecycle costs that were in capital, out of capital, and getting them into the general fund operations budget. This, again, goes directly to, you put operational expenses, where operational expenses need to be. And again, you don't stick them out here, hide them there, move around here, and play this shell game. You put them on your operations balance sheet. And this is what we're doing with this budget here. And again, companion, that move relevant appropriations from the CIP into the general fund to meet that demand. And it also incorporates a philosophy that minimizes the use of one-time reserves. Now, this was a relic of when we were getting the $1.1 million extra through B-Pole. It would come through, it would trickle through the end of the fiscal year as surplus, falling to undesignated fund balance. Then the next year, we pull it out and use it for capital. This is taking capital in the fiscal year and apply it against capital projects in the same fiscal year. And that's what you're seeing with this budget as well. The other critical drivers that we talked about, the $1.5 million decline in B-Pole revenue. As I said at the outset, we were under budgeting B-Pole to start with in the base O and M budget. $400,000 of this is directly related to O and M. We managed to meet that through certain reductions that we were able to make. And then certain increases in other revenue sources were related against certain places we had to increase the budget. But we didn't immediately go to say, you know, we're going to eat this with a tax increase. We're going to see if we can't absorb it somehow. And we were able to do it in this budget. From a capital perspective, the $1.2 million, well, you had 900,000 of it is going to be recovered under the meals tax. The other $200,000 were reductions, moving things around and moving things into the general fund that otherwise weren't there. So that helps make up for this difference. We addressed macro-level budgeting issues with vehicle and equipment rotation, getting them out of the CIP, consolidating them in the general fund, taking building maintenance, doing the same thing. Major road repaving. This was the oddest thing. We had road repaving in the general fund, we had road repaving in the CIP. We're getting V-DOT reimbursements to the general fund, but then we were doing budget transfers between the funds. And doing budget transfers back. Jenny came in like with clumps of hair in her hand and going, you need to see this. And so we completely moved everything back into the general fund, keep everything where A, the money's coming into, and B, keep them all together for when we go to spend it going out. And we're not transferring between the funds. And the same thing with technology upgrades. Paige moved his lifecycle replacements entirely in the general fund and cover any PC replacement is a general fund line item now. If he wants to replace a router, a switch, whatever he wants to replace is in the general fund today as opposed to the CIP fund. Any questions on any of that?
Pretty? My question is on the, I'm speaking, the priorities and employees.
Yes.
And we talked about educational reimbursement. How much is the reimbursement, like the $10,000 amount?
Yeah, there you go.
So I actually did a comparison just a couple of weeks ago, compared to our neighboring jurisdictions. And we're definitely on the more generous side compared to most of them. Our, we reimburse, we changed the policy a couple of years ago to be a little bit more flexible, as education has become a little bit more flexible, that, you know, not every course is a three-credit, you know, traditional college course anymore. So we reimburse the monetary equivalent of six credits at the George Mason in-state tuition, which equates, which is what you're trying to get at. For undergrad, it's around $2,900 at current tuition rates. And for graduate programs, it's around $3,300 at current tuition rates. Based on how many people apply and get recommended for the MPA program, I've talked to the town manager about increasing that a little bit, just to keep up with, you know, the quickly increasing tuition rates that are happening across the state. But that's what it's at now.
Okay, and that six credit hours is per degree or per semester, or per year?
Per year.
Per year, okay. And then the GMU MPA program, so how does it differ from the reimbursement program?
So the MPA cohort program, which is different from just, from the traditional MPA program, the cohort obviously goes, it's about two and a half years and it goes the whole time. That's 100% funded by the town.
Okay.
Yeah, the cohort program is, the regular MPA falls under normal tuition.
And just to put a finer point on that, it's because what ends up happening is, in the cohort, every cohort has representatives from all the Northern Virginia jurisdictions. And you might get somewhere from four Fairfax counties to one Vienna. Or you're going to get varying degrees of various jurisdictions, and you go through together. And it is truly an incredible networking opportunity. And you start really being able to reach and see what's happening in other jurisdictions as well as your own. So you're learning not only what's in the books and what's in the lectures and what you're writing about, but you're also learning from your colleagues about how things are done in other places. It is a unique, enriching experience. And so that one, because of the way it's structured, we do pay for the whole thing. Case in point, unfortunately, Amina's staring at me. We pay Amina her two classes a year to finish her MPA, which I should say, she's getting on her shit.
Graduation's coming up.
Graduation's coming up. But anyway, no, but we, that's structured in different ways.
Thank you. Yeah, the cohort, I did a very different program. It was a master's program for administration and teaching, and the cohort experience is like a whole secondary degree almost, having that, you go together with the same people, and it's just great. So I totally think everybody should do it that gets the chance. Other questions or comments?
No.
Oh, gotta watch it, you scratched your head, I think you had a question.
I just wrote some notes for myself. That's all I did.
Sheila?
No, I was kidding with Bill.
Oh, okay. I'm hyper-sensitive, I want everybody to get a chance.
All right, before we pivot to the next slide, I just want to say, next week, I'll be pretty much delivering this same presentation, minus the question-answer periods.
Right.
I'll hold the questions till the end. And hopefully we've answered a lot of them here. Feel free to ask them again next week, just to drive the point home. And as I've often told management team, when we presented a public hearing, it's not so much for you all, you've heard it a few times, it's for the cameras and the people in the audience.
Exactly.
So feel free, I'm not, I don't care if it's repetitive, you don't need to preface it, just ask the question and we'll answer it.
Especially those clarifying questions that we are too inside baseball and many people may not realize.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'll have all the staff there just to be sure that, you know, like John handing me papers and answering questions, Jenny answering questions, they'll all be there next week.
My biggest beef and my biggest hope is that you will always define your terms before you turn them into acronyms, because there are a lot of people who don't know what a CIP or an H-Talk or a B-Pole is. And, you know, if we want our citizens to be educated, they need to have the opportunities.
That is fair. Or I could put John in the booth and he can type it up on the bottom of his screen.
I can add placards, I can hand them up.
But you don't like banners?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's a great point, and we try to nudge each other because we all do it, but certainly that's a great point.
Yep.
Other questions on?
Point taken, I mean, you deal with stuff so much, you just get so used to rattling them off, and it's off the top of your head, but that is a good point, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I think we have a little bit more?
We have just a little bit more, I just want to go back through, again, the donations for this year. I want to make sure we put that on the fore of your mind. And then we do have a final slide of the unfunded priority list that we've talked about to see, again, I've got to be able to write the resolution appropriately to encapsulate any changes you might make on those fronts. So I want to be able to open the conversation. So right now...
I don't think all the grants are on here, are they supposed to all be on here? Or the donations?
They are. The donations are all there.
All of them?
He made it in two lines.
It's two lines, left and right.
I thought the same thing.
It was a bit tricky.
Organization, organization, yes, they're all there.
I did the same.
And again, because they total up...
Turning into Jen Baker on charts.
I'm sorry. The pie chart fell out, but we kept the good one.
All right, I apologize.
So right now, we have, what has come in by the grant deadline is $278,770. Just as a placeholder number, I kept the same funding levels last year at 218. Again, we were at about a 2.3% increase across the entire budget, so I just kept the same placeholder number in there. Any fluctuations, we can certainly talk about and absorb on the next series of slides. So if there's something you well want to, let's say, for some reason you come to a consensus on 250 or 230 needs to be the number, we can then certainly take $22,000 onto the next series of slides, and that could start the conversation on the unfunded priorities list. So anyway, with that, this truly is your conversation. I, I'm just presenting information, I kind of sit back and just wait for direction at this point, so I will yield to you all.
So can I ask a starter question?
Absolutely.
The amount of money that is requested in-kind, that dollar amount does not have to be, or does it have to be accounted for in the $218,000?
No, no, we don't need to account for that. I mean, a lot of that is police coming to Friday Live. It's what you're going to do, and we're just, instead of what we would do, like for instance, you get some events and police charge for, over, the event holder for additional officers, we just don't charge Friday Live for that.
Okay, the reason I asked was, it looks like, if my math is right, and I'm a reading teacher, so it may not be, but the total donations requested are 278,770, and we have proposed in the budget an amount of 218,000, so we're about $60,000 short.
Correct.
Not, and so that $18,000 doesn't have to be a part of that. So we're really just looking at that.
No, you're just looking at the cash. This is more a cash exercise, because again, the in-kind donations, the Friday Live, Wade and Maggie's overtime budget, I mean, we can do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we were looking at the right numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we want to talk about this tonight, or do we want to wait and hear from the public next week and follow up at the next work session, or both? I like that second one. I'm flexible with whatever you guys want on there.
I think we should talk about it a little bit tonight. Why don't you start?
Okay. Yeah, because I think this is something we should at least put forward and certainly hear from the public. And this has been on our past two work sessions, so for folks that are thinking on this. So hopefully we all agree on the HCTV, so if we just think of that as the 100K, because there's really no other place to fund the HCTV. And there is the, there is a fee we collect, I know it's not quite one-for-one, I can't remember what it's called, but...
It's a peg fee, comes from, it is paid for by the cable subscriber to the cable companies and remitted to us.
Right.
And it's for governmental programming.
Is peg an acronym?
Yeah.
And what you said for multiple, and just to put a point on that, we use it for multiple things, obviously pay HCTV because they provide that valuable service of public broadcasting of podcasts. But also too, we use it to pay maintenance on our fiber optic cabling, which goes out to the COC site that runs our internal network. We use it to pay for all the maintenance costs on that. It has to be kind of germane to the, the usage has to be germane to what the contract franchise agreement says it needs to be, and it's somewhere in that realm.
Yep. So my thought is just to try to make this simpler, if we all agree that we're going to give, let's just round that up to 100,000, 100,000 to HCTV. So now we're talking about $118,000, which of course is a really small amount in the overall percentage of the general. I would make a couple of suggestions. I would suggest that we potentially, potentially reduce the Herndon Elementary PTA, just to keep it more in line with the other PTAs, but we could also look at that, they ask
But we could also look at that, they ask for more and we could give them more, but why do we want to discuss that one? I would suggest that we remove the Art, All Ages Read Together one. We haven't funded that, I don't think ever, at least in the past several years. They've continually asked for it, which of course they're welcome to. But my suggestion would be to not grant that $30,000 fee. And then I would also suggest that we reduce Next Stop and Arts Herndon. I think as I've said at the last several work sessions and at the last week's public hearing, I think certainly the arts, we are an arts and entertainment community, but we do, I think, have to look at sort of size and scale of what we're offering when we look at these donations. So I'd like to see Next Stop potentially reduced to $30,000 is what I would suggest. And Arts Herndon, I would be open to doing the same, 30,000. That's what I would suggest.
Thank you. Other comments or suggestions? We certainly have to reduce somewhere or come up with some more money, so that's...
Yeah, I would say the Herndon Hospitality, continue the in-kind, but take away the 1,000. We didn't have that last year. I'm not really sure from reading the HEN, if somebody else knows something, I don't know, about 1,500. I know we gave them quite a bit to help get their garden going, so...
And I know they've received other grants as well.
Yeah. The Herndon High PTA, I think, PTSA, that's going to keep the kids off the street and it goes to all of our kids, that's their all-night grad, the kids at home. And I can agree with dropping the elementary school down to 2,000 instead of 5,000 because the money is used for transporting them to events. It's pretty, that's not many people being touched by that. All Ages Read Together, that's a school function, it's pretty much funding teachers, $30,000. But I think Next Stop and Arts Herndon, that used to be three organizations funded there. And now we're just funding two arts organizations. Because we did have Next Stop, Council for the Arts and the Foundation for the Arts, but now Arts Herndon is one for those two organizations, the two last ones I spoke of. So that's bringing it down some, but not totally.
Did we give to art, to the Council for the Arts and the Foundation for the Cultural Arts separately?
Yes, we did.
I don't recall that, okay.
Well, it's been about three years ago now.
Several years ago.
And then when they merged, right, yes.
But at much smaller levels.
It was smaller, these are large numbers, they were large last year as well.
Well, you also need to keep into the, keep in the big picture. We blow 350,000 on the Herndon Festival, that's just one little, you know, three, four day event. That's, you can go back and look at the numbers and the PowerPoint that we just went through with Parks and Rec. So when you consider that, even if we did all of this, that's not that much for year round. When you're looking at the amount of programs, I don't have the paper with me right now, I apologize, but together, the two arts organizations put out about just under a million dollars worth of entertainment to our community. So, I mean, you've got to put a value on that, especially when they're the ones bringing people down. When we do the Third Thursday, it really brings in a lot of people in the downtown, that's a no-cost event. I'll send everybody the list of all the no-cost events they do, most of us know what they are. Oh, and I totally forgot, the calendar. We put our calendar together, it used to be that the town hired a guy that went out and took all these pictures. Some of you may remember that, I'm sure Bill, our town manager, does. But years ago, we hired an individual that did that, we paid for that to be done. We now have an arts group that hosts it. And they made it a competition and something exciting for our community to do. Bringing people out once again that are into photography and our town, that probably would never meet each other except when they go to that event at Arts Base every year. And then, I don't do either, but I enjoy the pictures, so I show up, I don't do the pictures that often. So I just think the arts groups are kind of the glue. And also, I put it in my books, so if we forgot what our 2035 theme is, I can forward everybody the copy that I downloaded into my book. Because the arts are right in there in entertainment, and that's what the two arts groups do for this community. Thanks.
Other comments?
So, I really hope we don't make a decision tonight, but I do want to say...
I don't want to make any decisions, we'll hear from the public.
Yeah.
I would like to give the in-kind request, we're going to take that off the table, and HCTV, no question about that. I feel the same way about All Ages Read Together, they're an excellent, excellent group, I love them. But I think the key of our community donations is supporting the things that have been over time built up to be Herndon things. So Friday Night Live could not be any more Herndon, Jambrew has started to become a very strong addition to our cultural setup, and so has HEN. I believe HEN is asking for money for their environmental network for operating costs. They got 20,000 from Fairfax County to build the community garden, which is going to be a big positive. In fact, I did go to one of their meetings and there was a gentleman there who's moved from another part of the county to Herndon and he's, the first thing he did was show up at the HEN meeting because he wants to have a community garden. And my mother feels the same way, so I know there are a lot of people out there who are going to really benefit from it. As far as the arts groups are concerned, they have asked for more this year and I absolutely know that given the fact that we are trying to trim the budget rather than expand the budget, that's an issue. As far as the value though, I think we can say first of all that they provide an incredible service to the town. Secondly, they provide it at a much lower cost than if we were providing it. We do not, none of those groups have benefits. None of those people are paid what they would be paid on their normal economy. A nonprofit provides an incredible benefit to a town for very little money comparatively speaking. It's still money and it still has to be raised. And, but I do feel that they bring in an amount of money that's equal to or greater than, actually, it's much greater than what they ask us. And I also want to mention to everybody that when I'm writing a grant, I ask for the most I can possibly get. It's not, it's not an insult and it's not, it's not being, you know, thinking very highly of myself. It's saying, this is what I, this is what I could use, this is what I would do with it, this is why I am valuable. And I think resenting requests, I think, is misunderstanding the background that nonprofits come from.
I don't get the impression people are presenting anything, I think we're just trying to figure out what we can afford.
Absolutely.
And you're right, that's a good point though, you know, you're not going to ask for something and expect your grantor to go, oh, can we give you more? That never happens, so I think probably most of these groups are asking for more than they realistically expect to receive.
And last year, I believe, we gave 47,000 to each group. And given that we're trying to cut the budget, I would think that, and I'm, I would think that that might be a nice place to go back to.
If 47-ish?
47-ish.
It's 47 to 50 for both.
That's why we have John. So that's my... Okay, I like tossing these out because there's a lot of ways to do this and none of them are wrong. We just need to figure out what the balance is. So, Bill, do you want to see?
Yeah, I mean...
Or see what you've done, I'm sorry?
Yeah. No, I'm sorry.
No, that's a question.
I, you know, again, I'd like to get some public input on this, but me personally, this is an example, I know it was 45,000 each last year originally with both...
47 to 50.
47, but they requested 45, I believe.
Requested 45.
And from the year before it was 45, yeah.
Because, and the reason why I know is because the formula, being on the Herndon Village Network, the formula we derived was the actual number that we requested. We actually took the, we took money from that organization that was, and then, you know, we shifted it to them. And now Herndon Village Network's not on here anymore, and that's okay because of the fundraising. But I do think that, you know, we used a formula that was, you know, given to us in regards to the grant application process. I, you know, I think Signe's on the right path there, but again, I do want to get some public input on this to see where we're at, but I do think formulas matter, math matters. And that's where I would like to see where we're at, that's all.
I just did some quick math, if we did 47 to 50 and changed none of the other grants, we, except for taking out All Ages Read Together entirely, and I didn't split hairs on the other ones that we've talked about slightly reducing, that brings us to about a $10,000 gap, just for reference.
You're not set in stone, I just...
No, no, just...
Just spitballing?
We just want to see sort of where we are. Other questions or comments on this portion of what we've done? Okay, well, I do look forward to hearing from the public on that piece. And now, have we talked about unfunded priorities?
Nope, that's the next slide up.
Okay, I want to thank you, that was a very productive discussion, it's going to get dicey and I think that we're going to be able to get to a resolution on the donations, but we'll be about it.
So what you see here is just a representation of based on our last series, a couple conversations about this, the things that people were generating interest in. Again, not, nothing set in stone, these were just some of the things that some folks stood up and just kind of were passionate about or sponsored. What you see here is the TBD, that's the donations adjustment based on what you all do with the donation number before. We left room for you to, if you went over, that would be part of this discussion. So that's what this is. The feedback projects are a placeholder number of 150. Now what I want to do is based on the information I received today and sharing it with council, see where we already have it kind of programmed into the CIP and when these certain projects will go. Because some of these, like for instance, some of this crosswalk elements I was noticing, low hanging fruit, but we're doing a road improvement there, so let's wait till we do the road improvement and then lay that fruit out when we do it at that point. So we need to have a conversation, maybe that number needs to, is a little bit high, maybe we need to adjust the number down. But if we want to do more, that's just a placeholder number for you all to consider. Some of the other things, Assistant Town Attorney, this is sitting at, its requested number is 125.5. As we talked about the last time, this will save some contract attorney usage. So we're able to adjust the contract attorney's budget, the attorney's budget for our contract services down a little bit, yes.
How much do we spend on the contract attorney?
In your contracts, it's...
Multiple things.
Multiple, because sometimes it's to the project, sometimes it's just general for her, just...
There's no current, well, we do have the Contract Deputy Town Attorney, who is the prosecutor for the misdemeanor offenses.
But that's completely different from this, what this...
Not included, correct. We have Downtown Development, we have Contract Attorney that performs services for HR issues, financial issues, if there's conflicts, and they run... It would be different from year to year, I would say, but they run $300 to $600 an hour.
So over the year, how much do you think we spent?
I don't even know, we know for a year. I would say last year it was over, it was well over $80,000 to $90,000 for sure, on various issues. I mean, these are issues, one or two dozen issues, not an everyday sort of thing.
And this will supplant some of that usage, but case in point, if we have an HR issue, we want an attorney with an HR background, we want to go get a, somebody to truly dig deep into that issue. We have something very financially sensitive, we want somebody with a financial background digging into that question. I would say that some of that money would be supplanted, not all of it. I know last week, or two weeks ago, I put Lisa on the spot, she threw out like 75,000. I would never suggest we're going to save 75,000. I was going to say probably 30 to 40 reduction might be probably closer to where the accurate number is. But then we also have to consider too, if you approve the position, you've got to ramp it up, recruit, advertise, interview, bring them on board, get them up to speed. While that's going on, this is still has needs. So we're still, so where that number truly lies, I just want to make sure we're within a certain couple percentage points. So if we do need it, I can pull it from elsewhere to backfill if that, we get to that point. I just don't want to wipe out the entire line item by any stretch of the imagination. But there is a savings to be had here, we just don't know where that number is precise yet. We will have a better idea in two weeks when we start truly having this conversation. So that, I just want to make that point, that 125 isn't 125, it's probably 80 to 90 in that probably net increase. We had some things with Parks and Rec activities that you all wanted to talk about. And then, like I said, I made a pretty significant mistake by missing the sworn officers. That was something I should have caught before it went to print. And so that's on me.
It's a big budget.
And so I want to try to absorb that in. Now, I did turn to John and say, okay, what can we possibly amend in what we have given you to try to make up for this? And we're scratching that right now as well. So my point is at the bottom of the list, you see two, you see two options. Again, I, we advertised the meals tax rate at a 1.5 increase. If you go the additional 0.5, that's 450,000. If you go, I also gave the option to go half that, a 0.25. Now, if you come in and come in with $240,000 in additional spending to meet some of these requirements, let's do the quarter and we'll figure out the other 15,000 in the core budget. We'll figure that out and present to you a resolution that incorporates those changes. Pardon me?
It's the minimus.
Yeah, so I just don't want you to think you have to jump completely and let's fill this bucket up. If there's a point where you can go to the lower number and you want to go to the lower number, then we can certainly, and you can't quite get there, we'll find a way to help you get there. We're here to help you, this is all, again, this is micro post-budget to you, but truly, once you adopt, it is your budget for the citizens of this town. And I want to give you the best possible product I possibly can for you to do that with.
So I have some questions, but you guys want to go first, you can, somebody? Okay, so I have a few questions, the feedback projects at 150,000, is that, is some of that already accounted for in the CIP?
It could be, that was new information, but you're the feedback chair, I'll...
So I think some of it was, but not all of it, certainly.
And the way we prioritized was what was not currently covered or what was going to be kicked out to 20, 25 or 27. So there was a few that seemed real critical that we could get in there. But I don't have those exact ones.
Right, right.
Well, I was just trying to get an understanding, because that's the biggest number here, so I wanted to just say, is any of this already accounted for? So maybe this number is actually really a little, at least a little smaller?
One of the things is, is we didn't, we didn't, we haven't costed these projects yet. They haven't gone through the EPW costing model, so we don't know where that number stands. And when we talked the last time, Councilmember Dagula and I were sitting there talking about, you know what, through sustainability, we've put just a placeholder number of 75,000 to hit low hanging fruit the following fiscal year. Even though we didn't know what we would need, let's just put a number in there where we can budget against. The 150 was a product of that conversation. It's a placeholder for us to have a conversation. And potentially, as we start costing some of these critical projects, we can potentially move that forward. One of the other things I would caution everybody on in that point is, once we cost them, we also have to look at, do they have the resources to do that in amongst the other workload in next year's work plan? So we'd have to look at it twofold. This is something that we're trying to instill in all our CIP-related projects moving forward. The money, is the money there? And then operationally, can we absorb it to get it done in the year we're trying to say we get it done? Because I don't want, we're trying to get out of this habit of reserving money through the following fiscal year because we couldn't get to it last fiscal year. So we want to make sure we're able to do it.
So my next question is about Kids at Hope, it's $15,000 that, so we're already giving, or they've requested $4,000 in the grant donation fees, how, what is this, how's this different?
I will yield to my, to Director Roder, as you said.
And I'm sure that it is, but I want to understand it.
So the 15,000 in here is, I would say, it's not going to Kids at Hope, it's for the programs we've been doing that address the Kids at Hope initiatives, such as the studies we're doing with Hodgson, Herndon Elementary's asked us what programs to give us.
So this is for Parks and Rec to be able to provide those programs? Okay, I wanted to just make sure that was clear. So this is about $384,000 worth of unfunded priorities, if my math is right? That's what I thought, okay, good. To me, the two that I think are absolutely key are the Assistant Town Attorney and the sworn officer's adjustments. That's about $190,000. Obviously, the feedback projects are important as well, and it sounds like we are on our way for some of those, so I'm just...
And to make a finer point too, we'll net back some of that on the attorney. We can go back and adjust the contract line item in the attorney's budget, take some out to give you some of that back. So you're probably, the 190 might sit at 160, actually, so just to give you a little...
But we're trying to budget conservatively so that we can cover it.
Right, and that's the way it came through the budgetary process, and once it got kicked out, I just kicked it onto a list. And with further analysis, it has other impacts. And that's what, that's what... that's, that's what this was faced with.
So the additional half cent would totally cover this and then some. If we had only the point-two-five increase, we're still about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars lacking to, to fund this whole list. So I'm open to discuss it, of course. I, I, my personal feeling is that we need to make sure we get this, the Town Attorney and the Sworn Officers Adjustment piece in there. I think those are critical to a lot of the issues we're working on. I'm just one person. I'm sure there are questions and comments. Jen?
I'll chime in. Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think those are the only two priorities here. I think we can also, again, from our previous discussion on donations, I think we can save a little there. We can, and then between those two, potentially, we're really talking about maybe a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know if there's a way to do this without increasing the tax even more. Because again, I just don't want to be misleading here. These, this half cent or quarter cent, this is in addition to the one cent that's already a given within the budget. So we're talking about what's in addition to the one we're already...
Yep.
Because my goal would be to keep it as close to one, or keep it at one, as opposed to anything more. I don't know if that's reasonable, because we, we do have to, we have at least one absolute requirement on here, right? The sworn officers. I think the Town Attorney, I know when we talked about that, really, it sounded like, I mean, there's just so much work going on, I think, with, with legal services and what we need. And given that you do outsource a lot, I know there will still be some requirements to outsource. But having someone that's in-town employee does feel like a better fit, given all the responsibilities and the tasks coming up in the next few years.
Questions, comments? Caesar?
So let's define priority. I think what we were talking about, P-back. So imagine you're a mom pushing a stroller on the sidewalk, and then you have to come to a stop and go into the street to continue walking. Imagine you're in a wheelchair, and you're rolling along, and there's no way for you to get off but to go into the street and continue on your way. That, to me, is a priority. And I wouldn't be putting this forward if we haven't identified some of these issues that have existed for far too long in our town as we increase developments, people, traffic, cyclists. I think it's a priority. I think we won't put forward something that is not. And I think, give us another week, and we'll identify those. And these won't be just random things. I think increasing those, those dollars to those projects is, is a priority. And I'd ask for you all to, once we identify them, or make them available, welcome. And put yourself in a, in a wheelchair, or put yourself in a mom's position as she's pushing a stroller.
I don't disagree. Budgets are about choices and figuring out how to make it work. So I would love to make all of this work.
So what I'll be glad to do is, is the list, like I said, I received it fourth Thursday this afternoon. I will send you all first thing in the morning.
The list of, is it?
Yeah, all the P-back projects, to include where they're defined, the CIP, and just to get a better sense of what we're, what they are.
These were tier-one, we have to do.
And so I'll be glad to send that out first thing in the morning, which might be twelve oh one, depending on what happens. But you'll, you'll get them tomorrow morning, and then it'll spark the conversation.
And just for clarity, what was published was the one-point-five.
One-point-five.
So...
Is that what was advertised?
We advertised one-point-five because I knew you all had some things in mind. And we wanted to make sure that you had the maneuver room. Again, this is your budget. Once I, once I submit it to you all, it becomes yours. And it needs to reflect yours and your values. And I want to make sure, I've done the best I can to try to meet your values. Now, it's, I wanted to give you an opportunity to put your fingerprints on it. So we advertised it one-point-five for that reason.
And just to finish off my point, so that takes us to four percent on the meals tax, which is still well below the Commonwealth average, considering whatever average is.
Still below it, yeah.
And, and having not increased it since 2012, just to put all those things into context. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree. And I think we need to make sure the public understands all of that. Something I was going to say...
And just...
Oh, just to clarify, because it is confusing, especially if you're new to budgeting, which a lot of, I think, our residents that are coming, maybe their first budget they've ever commented on. We've advertised up to one-point-five so that we have that flexibility. The recommended budget that has been presented is, only includes one, but these are the unfunded priorities that we're trying to grapple with. Which or what do we pay for, and how do we do it? So, and last year, we couldn't talk about going up because we hadn't advertised that.
And this is new this year, and I'll be brutally honest, I'll give credit where credit's due. Mercury Payton and his staff over again do this. And I thought it was a wonderful idea to get council input right at the close of the budget, advertise accordingly to make sure, make sure input to be in there. Also too, I just directed Jenny to send me the Weldon Cooper study. I will send that out there as well on meals taxes, so you all can be on the same sheet of music as to what we were talking about here.
Other comments or questions on this? Signet?
Just the Kids at Hope, those are going to Title I schools, right? That, those funds that you identified, Mr. Payton. Are, do you know if there are any ready grants for matching something to, to cover costs? Because they're entitled to, I believe, extra funding for those things.
So right now...
You know more than I would, but...
Right now, the pilot that we're doing with Hutchinson is partially funded through the C-three, Code Three.
Right.
The Code Three grant that they have, and their Title I funds that are helping with transportation to...
Thank you. Yeah, and I know that, I mean, we talk about transportation, but it doesn't really have a big impact, but it's a huge impact because it's very hard to get. So I know when I was working with Herndon Elementary School, the, the principal kept saying to me, if you can get a bus, that's the main thing I want, a bus to anywhere. I also really, as I expressed last time, support Family Fund Days, because I think it has a much bigger impact on the town than the thirty-five hundred dollars that it costs us. As someone whose mom is in a wheelchair and very disabled, the P-back projects that Councilmember Dagula mentioned are not only important to me, but they, I, I feel like applying with ADA regulations, which we always want to do but may not have exactly gotten done, decreases our risk of liability later on. So, and the Assistant Town Attorney and the Downtown Events and the Sworn Officers, I, I, they're all good.
Hard to choose. She's an affected kid.
And imagine now, sitting, sitting up in the budget team meetings when you're looking at a hundred and fifty of these things, and you're trying to prioritize them. And so...
Well, I'm anxious to hear. This presentation will be out next week for the public. I'm anxious to hear. I mean, they, they may line up and say, fund it all, we're fine. Okay, that makes it easier. But I'm interested in the public's priorities as well. So it'll be interesting. Is that the end?
Is that it?
Anybody else? Councilmembers are dropping like flies or something?
Thank you all. That was very valuable, was a great conversation. I appreciate it. Appreciate it very much.
I appreciate it as well. What is next? Okay, that brings us to our general items, which is just one, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Administration, Article One, Section two-point-five, to add a preamble, additional language to ethical responsibility, and specific references to the Town Charter and Town Code. We have received a few comments that have been introduced to record. And I will recognize the Town Attorney for, to outline the proposed ordinance, and that's my turn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, I think, the third time we've talked about the ethics ordinance. First time was a general discussion with an outline of all of the enabling legislation in the state code and our charter, and, and our actual existing Code of Ethics. The la, at the last work session, we had another conversation, another discussion, at which time I presented what was the draft of an amended ordinance for your review, based upon the comments that I received. No changes were made to that ordinance other than outlined in the staff report. That is, the amendments to the ordinance represent addition of a preamble reflecting the values of the town, which were noted in many of the examples that were given to me to use as references, things that councilmembers liked. I also created numbered paragraphs for ethical responsibilities. We added specific language that was consistent with town values in paragraph number one, under faithful and impartial performance of duties. There's reference now made to your actual oath of office, where you swear to faithfully and impartially perform your duties. Also added references to independence. Finally, the references were added to, for sites, to applicable Town Charter and Town Code sections that previously didn't exist, for the final three paragraphs, paragraph two, three, and four. I broke out some of the paragraphs into more subsections to highlight duties there, as I believe I was directed by council at the, during the last, by consensus during the last discussion. So what you have before you is what I heard at the last time we discussed what you wanted to see. It has been presented and put on the agenda for your, at your pleasure and at your will, for the public hearing agenda next week. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Questions or comments for the Town Attorney? Signet?
I really like the changes that you made. They made it more, I guess, more easy to understand where things are. And I especially like in three A, I didn't notice until I read through the Charter a couple of times that it only talked about board and commission members, it didn't talk about council members. So I like that you have that in there. So thank you.
Other questions, comments? Anybody? Caesar?
So independence, what does that mean?
Independence, I took from some of the references that had been given to me. Independence, you, this is your, this is council's ordinance to guide yourself and your, to govern yourselves and the boards and commissions. So as far as what independence means, in the absence of a different definition, law requires that independence is the common definition, I'm sorry, that, that the common definition be used. So independence would receive the common definition of acting on one's own initiative.
So not an agent of Russia?
Well, that could be one.
I think that's a little weird, but...
What's weird?
Independence, what, what's, I'm just trying to...
And demonstrate integrity, independence, honesty, and ethical behavior, and conduct of all business. I mean, if it has no, if it doesn't speak to you, I, I pulled it out of things that had been referenced. So if it doesn't speak to you, you can certainly strike that.
It seems like it was a big point of conversation. People were talking about independence, acting on behalf of the town, putting the town above any other entity, or she's not working on behalf of, you know, you're trying to do what's best for the town, not what's best for a nonprofit, or a political party, or a friend of yours, or a business that you're associated with. That, that's how I read it, but maybe it's not clear to everybody.
So this independence include nonpartisan as well?
It could. I would not attempt to define it.
That's why, I guess I'm trying to define it.
I would not attempt to define it. Whatever body is utilizing this, this legislation would define it. It, just as they would define honesty, integrity, ethical behavior.
Is that because if we list out, this is, these are the things that, if you need to be independent from this, and this, and this, and this, then if it's not in the list, it's implied that that doesn't, that doesn't count?
That is the danger of defining every term, yes. And we spent a lot of time discussing that, and landed on the, on this type of language in the ordinance. Now, we can certainly go back and start all, I am...
I do not want to go back and start all over. I think we've spent a ton of time on this. And we have a nice document here that should be, I feel like after all of these discussions, pretty close, if not, ready for prime time. Sheila?
Having to read legalese on insurance documents, which that is all it is, is legalese, I think the, the word independence does speak to, we're not representing some outside influence other than, you know, we're, we're of course listening to the, to the people in the town, our constituents. But it, I personally don't have a problem with integrity, independence, honesty, and ethical behavior, because I should be acting independent of somebody that wants me to do something because they can get a better deal on their land sale. So I should be independent of those individuals.
I've got no problem with independence because our country was founded besides the Articles of Confederation on the Declaration of Independence. It basically was the forefoot of the Constitution.
Jen?
I have a question regarding, are the intent, is this for essentially when we're in public, when we're meeting as a public body? Right? So if I look at number two, for example.
There's number two. Demonstrate integrity and respect.
Mm-hmm. So if two councilmembers are meeting privately, like, and one councilmember feels like that didn't happen, is that something they would then address at a, you see what I'm getting at? I'm just trying to figure out, is this because in front of the public that we're concerned, and that that's the intended behavior? But how much is this monitoring?
This is a document that council will introduce. Council would determine whether or not that what, whatever, any, any sort of facts arises to, you know, a violation of these requirements, as would a very specific Code of Ethics, like some we saw, that in define, in listing out a number of items, probably, I think we all decided excluded items too. So just to say that what it's going to cover and not cover without telling me the exact facts, I don't know. I think it would be up to this body to decide.
And this is not talking about your private, personal behavior in your home, is it?
Well, I would certainly hope that wouldn't become, come to this table to be determined. But I think the citizens of this town are looking for certain behavior from their representatives and in representing them. And that would be the way that they typically interpret that. Sheila?
I want to just clarify, it wasn't to where it said be, everything was there except for the red in our previous?
Correct.
Because we did, I mean, just so the individuals here that may not have been around, we did have a councilperson saying some terrible things about a staff member, and it just wasn't good. And you go back a few years before, before this was written, and we had a councilmember parading an eighty-six, six, eighty-something-year-old woman in a public hearing. So that was kind of where this came from. I mean, you can't specifically put every little net-ficking thing, or you're not going to be able to cover it. But we, over the years, prior to my being on the council and since, I mean, I saw, sat in this room when I was not on the council, watching a councilmember parade our town attorney. It was, I was embarrassed to even be in a room where a councilmember would act that crudely in a public forum, too. So that's where some of these words came from. And the, I mean, they weren't there. I doubt anything would have been done with the council that was in place at the time. But it's trying to get us to have some decorum, especially when you're in public. I try to do that... I try to do that, I've got two sons, my goal was, with them was always, don't embarrass me publicly, and I will not embarrass you publicly. It was kind of a two-way street.
It's a perk of the job, though.
Yes.
For a little pack.
Yes. But I really didn't want them embarrassing me publicly, so I told them I wouldn't do the same stuff.
Does anyone that hasn't already spoken or asked a question about this have any comment? Okay, Caesar?
So no remedy to any of this?
The remedies, and I can pull them up again. The remedies, and I'm sorry, are what we spoke about at the original discussion. They are contained in the state code and in our town code. They include censure, fines, removal from committees, and removals from a meeting. Now, all of that is, all that power is given to you, or all that possibility is given to you by our charter. Removal from office is only authorized by state code or charter. We do not have the ability to remove from office in our charter. And by state code, you can only be removed by the court when you commit a felony or a couple of other circumstances, or by a court pursuant to a petition of a certain percentage of citizens that's filed alleging that certain situations have occurred that they would like the court to consider removing a public officer from office. Specifically, the Code of Virginia gives the power that a governing body may fine or punish a member for disorderly behavior, cannot use your public off, see, these are all Code of Virginia sites, cannot use your public office to retaliate, threaten, or retaliate for expressing views for...
Or threaten to it.
Threaten to. You can read it better than I can. You can forfeit your office. Forfeiture of the office is required if you're sentenced for a commission of certain crimes, felony, or offenses against minors. That's the one I just said that a court could, could carry out, or the court can carry out the removal of elected official or certain appointed officers upon a petition.
And if I could just point out, that is once all appeals have been exhausted.
Yes, definitely. And our charter specifically says, as I mentioned, that the town council establish its own rules of order and procedure and take it for every action against its own members and other persons. And that appropriate action is pretty much anything other than the removal, which we don't have authority to do. So those are in place despite what we might say.
Those are in place even if we had zero code of ethics in our code?
Yes, because prior to 2015, there was, there was nothing in Herndon.
Other questions? Sign me.
There's a member of the public who frequently comes and tells us that unless we establish a code of conduct, we are liable, all of our contracts will be void and so forth. Is there any validity to that argument that she keeps making?
Contracts of the town?
That's what she keeps saying. In the public...
Am I the only one who hears this?
I have.
Okay.
I do not even know what that means. So I have not ever heard of any cases interpreting that. It's certainly not anything that, that I think this body needs to be concerned about.
Okay. I mean, I didn't think so, but I also am sure...
You are governed by, you are governed by state laws regarding conflicts of interest, which could, you know, enter into voiding certain contracts, possibly if there was a conflict of interest. So, so without anything else, I can, I, I can't even guess what that is.
And that's now specifically stated, and maybe it was before in our code of conduct that we...
Well, specifically stated, but you're required by state code to comply with the state Code of Conflicts of Interest Act, yes.
So I, I really feel like, having read this a number of times and thought about it, that it's been very helpful to me to think about the code of conduct, and to think about ethics, and to consider what other people are doing, and to consider whether we need to do the same. And I really like what you've put together for us. And I understand your arguments that if we're too specific, then it has the appearance of excluding. So I'm glad we did this, and I, and I really appreciate people taking the time to think it through. I hope that if there's anything that's missing, that, that somebody informs us and we can get it in there, because to me, it looks pretty good now, and I like the form. So I think discussing a code of conduct is really important, and discussing ethics is really important, and we've done that, and I value it. And I know that also there are other things that have come up that we need a social media code.
And that's, that's coming, right?
I have an update on that. The International Municipal Lawyers Conference that I went to in DC last Friday and Saturday, I did receive their draft model ordinance, its draft, so even the rest of the country doesn't have that yet.
We can start.
As I said, Virginia also is, is anticipating, Virginia local government attorneys, and I would, I would, I appreciate that you are willing to wait for the knowledge and guidance that that sort of model, of model ordinance would offer, I think.
I did receive a, if I may, I did receive a, a citizen sent me their social media policy from their job, and it was interesting because unlike ours, which are set out in various, you know, sort of legalese, theirs had little examples of different opportunities where, you know, you could question whether or not this was correct or not. And I'll send it to you because I think it's interesting, but we're kind of hamstrung in a sense by the fact that we're a government and all of our documents are written that way.
Well, I mean, they, they don't have to be. I mean, you know, we have regulations governing employees that, you know, aren't written that way. So that's probably what you're looking at is employees.
And to the finer point, too, and I'm not sure, I don't think we're doing it anymore because I still have a page or review of AR-138, but AR-138 was a very confusing how-to-use computer telepathy case equipment, social media policies all rolled into our administrative regulation, 138. Because it was so confusing, we wrote a pamphlet. What behaviors are right, what are wrong, what, what are your, what are the sanctions against you if you violate this? And it was written like conversational. And so we gave them the pamphlet, in addition to the AR, they signed the AR pamphlet, and they read it, and there it gets enforced. But that, I think that's what, I think Lisa's talking about, is, you know, you can have a legalese document to cover you, under state law or whatever, and then have a companion piece that is more consumable by this end of person, that is directly derived from that legalized piece.
Some more comments or questions? Sheila?
Yeah, I look forward to seeing what you have on the social media, especially with our neighbor to the west having your issue. Would like to make sure, I don't have that.
So the neighbor to the west was involved with the International Municipal Lawyers Model Ordinance, as well as the local government attorneys, I don't, I think.
I will say, my son, that is working locally in town, graduated from George Mason, he basically has gone to only posting pictures of cats, just in some cases. He doesn't want to have to deal with anything with his work, because he doesn't want any backlash. He likes his job, he wants to stay there.
Sure. Lisa, did, when you were at the international lawyers thing, did you bring up the code of ethics and conduct, whatever?
No, they were, I mean, you're in a room with people, we were talking only about, about social media. I mean, they...
Oh, so they brought up the social media.
Oh, yes, it was an entire, I went to an entire session about social media, yes. So I have that.
Did you post on Facebook?
We did not.
Okay, well, it sounds like our weeks and weeks of discussion have, have got us where we were hoping to be. And if there's no other questions or comments about item number 10, we will, that brings us to the consent agenda, which has the proclamation honoring Manny Fierro as the Rotary Citizen of the Year. That's going to be on the consent agenda because the vice mayor will be presenting it at the Rotary Dinner, and a resolution to award a contract for asphalt, concrete, paving, and milling, and staff is available if there are questions on either of those. All right. That brings us to roundtable. Who would like to start? Anybody? Sign me.
I enjoyed a wonderful presentation by our mayor at the, at their coworking play, yeah, Evolution. They had really good cookies, Evan Hoffman sang Singin' in the Rain. I had to miss that because I was driving, it was quite wonderful. Otherwise, you know, it's been pretty low-key, so that's all I have.
Okay. Go around, sign me.
We all attended, most of us. HPD Award, and it was, it was a great night, fun night, and once again, I want to thank HPD Public Affairs Department for, you know, keeping us residents and everybody safe and sound, and that was a great night. That's all I have.
Mr. McKenna?
I'll give a little more detail next week, but I would, the Dulles Phase One and Two for the railway meeting today, we had, and good news is the Herndon Garage will be finished next week. It's 98% completed, so the new garage will be fixed, and then they'll obviously work on the old, but next week will be the opening, and the Innovation Station Garage should be finished by December. But I'll go more into detail on some other things, but I think the Herndon Garage is a big deal, very excited about that.
Awesome.
That's it.
Thank you. Caesar?
Got nothing.
All right. Jen?
So thank you to Mr. McKenna for bringing up Jeff Davidson last week at the public hearing. I appreciated that you acknowledged him, and of course, we're coming up this weekend, it'll be the one-year anniversary of his death. And I also appreciated that Bessie Denton brought up, hey, we should do a memorial, just drawing that out there, and assuming that was for Jeff, and it wasn't, we should talk about that. So I don't know what needed to happen, what are next steps, especially because it's budget season, I mean, that shouldn't be expensive, or it could be donations, but what do we do?
No, it depends on what you have in mind. I'm assuming you don't want to rename Herndon Parkway, since that was his passion.
Yeah, that's true. I like it.
You know, that would be big, that would be apropos.
Mr. Town Manager, we have that policy.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we do have that naming policy. One-year naming policy.
But it's one year coming up.
I definitely, oh, definitely, he definitely means all the...
It depends on what you're trying to do. And staff, if you have something in mind, the staff will start working something up.
Yeah. Yeah, I had sent an email to, who did I send it to? To Cindy and to Bill, because I had thought, and I mean, certainly something to think about, like his, he was really passionate about the Carol Cabin, I wondered if there was something to, to do there, and plant a tree, or put a bench, or if there's, I don't know. I would really like to do something that would be meaningful for, you know, for Jeff. A lot of times, it's an outside organization, or friends that raise the money for the plaque or whatever, and I mean, I would certainly be willing to personally contribute to something like that, but I think, why don't we bat around some, some ideas and just kind of see what might make sense?
We could, we could sort with the staff to try and throw some things up and start the conversation, yeah.
Maybe he does some ideas because he's done more of these kinds of things. That would be great.
Remind me at management team on Thursday, and let's have a conversation.
That would be great.
Yeah, when Lee Powell, former councilwoman, passed, they did a tree over at Community Center.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, remember when Lee Powell passed, they chose to do a tree over at the Community Center, right?
Right, in Red Park, we planted a tree.
Yeah, correct.
We have the bench in front of me in Ranjanca.
Yeah.
Couple things.
We can...
Something airplane-related, right? It feels appropriate as well for him, so.
We'll bat it around and thank you for having discussion items.
And the anniversary is the seventh, which is Sunday. I should mention that in my remarks of the mayor's volunteer appreciation. I did reach out to Paul, I sent him a text on the day of the accident, just that we're thinking of you, and she was, rough time right now.
That was the one, thank you. Okay. So, wanted to bring up an airport. I got to go to the Leesburg Airport with the Committee for Dulles to tour private jets. So it was very interesting. There were several...
Yes, I know.
We could get one just for council, they had several, and we included staff, there were anywhere from six people...
I advertised one and a half percent, not 10%.
Okay, so, but it was really awesome, but I got to get on all these planes. There were several that were like sewer pipes that even a short person like me is going to hunch down. I really enjoyed getting on the ones that were not sewer pipes, so that was kind of fun. And, you know, out there with all those other people that were shopping for such planes. I had one other thing. This was great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for inviting...
I forgot my book, are there some laying around?
Yeah, it was great seeing a lot of the officers that I don't get to see often, but I know, like, there are two there that coached my son Matt too many years ago. They tell me to quit reminding him, because it's been so many years ago. But I really enjoyed the story about what's going on with our police and, I'm just an elementary school, because I know for years, I lived in Four Seasons, my kids went there, and every time I would hear council members talk, they only talked about Herndon Elementary. Well, kids that live in town go to other schools, it's not just Herndon Elementary. So I was really pleased to hear that, and I know it's really helpful because I really enjoyed the time over there, and my son still got friends, both of them that they grew up with over there. So it's a great school, very diverse, but it's a lot of fun. It's an education just to go over there.
Thank you. I just had two quick kind of personal things. I had the opportunity today, but the first friend that I made when I moved to Northern Virginia in 1996 was a woman named Noelle Naylor, Noelle Abrams Naylor, and I realized a couple of years later that her grandfather was General Abrams of the M1 Abrams Tank is named after. And her father was his son, and he passed away back in August, and today was his internment at Arlington National Cemetery. And I'd never been to a Arlington National Cemetery burial like that, and this was, and he was a four-star general for many, many years. There was a full honor guard, and the full band, and the cannons, and artillery, and tourists were coming around saying, what's going on over there? It was just really beautiful, and I was honored to be a part of it. It made me think about, and he served in Vietnam, and it brought me back to the Vietnam Veterans Proclamation that we had last weekend. I was just, I was thinking about you guys when I was there, so it was really an honor. And Auburn rated it to the final four, first time in a while. Very excited. There's certainly finally four, because we've never been to the fourth, so.
Just real fast, if I can also just seize on the annual awards ceremony, one of the things that I find always impressive about our police department is, if you read those awards in there, you're going to read great traditional police work, there's not great investigative work, great apprehension work is represented there, but the thing that's striking is how a public information officer and an officer on the street took a troubled youth under their wing, turned them from troubled youth to somebody who's now signed up for the new police academy.
It's still a process.
It's a process. It's still a work and process, but what also struck me is, again, the Hutchinson elements. So the way in which Maggie runs her department to do quality police work on the traditional side, mixed with how they realize policing is also about getting those kids from committing crimes at some point, intervening early, and trying to be positive role models in their lives, I mean, it was truly, truly touching. And again, it's a testament to the staff down there and the work they do. And finally, the fifth, fifth submission of site plan hit the doors today.
Fifth.
Number five.
We're going to get this right.
So again, each time comments, and it gets parsed down, so this is hopefully it, or hopefully, you know, but we'll see, we have to dig into it, make sure they've answered the issues that we have. The fifth submission has it today. So it is an internal process, and it is highly detailed, but anytime you hear that we're not doing our due governmental diligence on this project, this is the fifth submission of the site plan. Again, we want to get this right.
Good. Busy, busy week. Okay. Anybody else have something that popped up?
Okay, so as, thank you for voting to amend the agenda this evening. As you are aware, we had a situation occur during last week's public comment regarding the public safety of government building used for many purposes, including Fairfax County Court proceedings. The town manager communicated his concerns about this last Wednesday. He, along with the town attorney and chief, have asked, and we discuss this tonight, and the serious concerns that it may have created. So with that, I will ask... So with that, I will ask for, or I will move that we go into closed session under Section 2.237 11A 19, the Code of Virginia, to discuss plans related to the security of a governmental building or structure and safety of persons using that building. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? Okay, so it is what comes up. It is 9:51, let's take five minutes and then scoot back in here and have this conversation.